Signed in, it looks like you all have, please do. And indicate with if you wish to speak. And our procedure here is generally, we start meetings with a public comments session. But in this case, if you are here on us, on an issue that's also on the agenda, such as the Demalia Lindsay special permit application, we're gonna take public comments during the course of that matter. So, if you wish to speak, we ask that you identify yourself, stand, so the speaker can pick you up, give your name and address. We value your comments, we may not respond immediately. If actions required or requested, we may discuss your issue at the end of the meeting. If you don't wanna stay, we'll contact you later. If there are a lot of people that wish to speak, we hold a second, we'll cut it off, get through our business, and hold a second public comment period at the end of the meeting. So, those are our basic ground rules. Is there anybody that wants to speak tonight? Not related to the Demalia Lindsay matter, or something else here? Yes?
I would like to, I don't know if you need me to say it now.
Sure. Can you give your name?
My name's Danielle Jardina, I live at two thirty-seven Gardner Road.
Yes.
Hubbardston. I would like to speak on the action item C, so I don't know if you'd like me to wait until that time?
I think, I think you can speak, go ahead. What is, request for agenda inclusion regarding camper placement?
Yes, but I wanted to hear what it was about before I speak.
My only concern is that Mr. Christopher might not be here, is he here yet?
I don't see him, and that's the reason.
Cause he is on the agenda.
Yes.
And we will take it up, and I'll give you a chance to speak, but I hate to have him not hear your comments. Sometimes if we know something's gonna take an hour, we tell people they can come late. So, just raise your hand again, so I don't forget you when we get there, okay?
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
So, the agenda, like I'm on here for the gravel pit letter we received.
Yes.
We can go at any time, and then you don't.
We have a public hearing we're gonna go into.
Yep.
It's probably gonna take, I don't know, half an hour forty-five minutes?
So, should I, should I wait?
You can come, yes.
Okay.
Yes, or you can go and come back.
Oh, no, no, I'll wait.
I mean, in forty-five minutes, we wouldn't, if you weren't here, we'd go to the next and bring you back in.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so. I think we, our next order of business is then, approval of minutes.
Yep.
Yep, so, hopefully we've all read them. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of November sixth?
I would like to, at this time, take the minutes of November sixth, and I'm putting forth, I'm putting forth a motion for us to approve them, as submitted during this meeting.
Second anyone?
I will second that motion.
Any comments or questions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Wanna do the next one too?
I will do so, give me a moment. At this point, I would like to submit for approval, the minutes for November the twentieth, showing in attachment number two.
Second?
I second.
Discussion, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Alright, so our next order of business. Let me get to my, my script here, so I don't skip anything. Is an app, is an application for a special permit filed by Megan Demalia and Debbie Lindsay, to operate a photography studio at two forty-five Gardner Road in Hubbardston.
Madam Chair, I have, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a conflict of interest, I'll have to recuse myself from this hearing.
Recognized, that's, that's true. Thank you, John. Those of you who don't know, John's a co-owner of this land, and spouse of the applicant, so he can't participate. Also, board members were reminded that if they feel they couldn't make a fair decision and be impartial, because there's a board member involved, they could recuse themselves, and nobody has opted to do that. So, I think we can, we can proceed along. I'll entertain a motion to enter public hearing on this application.
Madam Chair, at this point in time, I would like to put forth the motion that allows us to go into this public meeting, to discuss the persons to the provision of the Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, Hubbardston Planning Board's hearing for the review of the special permit application by Megan Demalia and Debbie Lindsay with regards of two forty-five Gardner Road in Hubbardston.
Again, I need a second?
Second.
This is to go into public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Okay. We need to make note that it was, this, this meeting was properly re, notice was properly given. And I'm gonna give that over to Christina to read the notice and tell us how notice was given.
Okay, the notices were sent out two weeks in advance to all abutting properties within three hundred feet of two hundred and forty-five Gardner Road. They were sent via certified mail to all the butters. They were also posted twice in the Gardener News for all to read, two weeks in advance of this meeting.
Okay.
And again, one week in advance of this meeting.
Is it a long notice?
No, I can read it.
You wanna read it quickly?
Okay.
I'm trying to waste, waste time, but I wanna make sure we don't skip.
I'm having trouble with the.
Oh, I have it right here.
Can I read it?
I can read it. It says, notice to Hubbardston of a planning board, public hearing Wednesday, December fourth, two thousand nineteen at six thirty. You're being notified as an abutter of this property of affected party, I guess it's or affected party under Hubbardston by law, that pursuant to provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, the Hubbardston Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December fourth, two thousand nineteen at six thirty, in the town offices, Seven Main Street, Slade Building, to review the special permit application of Megan Demalia and Debbie Lindsay, with regards to two forty-five Gardner Road, Hubbardston, Mass, and a proposed photography studio at that location. The application for this special permit may be viewed at the planning board or town clerk's office during regular business hours. Alright, so, just a few statements about procedure tonight. A decision to approve or modify an application for a special permit requires an affirmative vote of four members. So, it's a super majority, and that's in our bylaws, Section seven five. The alternate member of the planning board, in this case, Josh DeBois, is our alternate member, participates and votes on a special permit application due to the recusal of a board member, John Demalia, for a conflict of interest. The board must issue a written statement of reasons for its decision, whether approving or denying, and has ninety days following the public hearing to do so, unless an extension is agreed upon between the parties. The planning board decision to grant a special permit must be decided on criteria set forth in seven point five, and each of those criteria has to be voted on separately with recorded votes, is my understanding. And finally, a decision to grant a special permit may impose appropriate conditions and limitations. So, those are just some statements of facts and procedures, procedures relating to this. And then a quick summary of facts leading up to this point, and petitioners, or anyone can make correct them if you, if anything I've said is wrong. But it's my understanding, the property at issue is located at forty-five Gardner Road, it contains one point nine acres of land, has two hundred feet of frontage. A sixteen hundred and thirty-two square foot, single-story commercial building is located on the lot. It was built in nineteen eighty-eight, a year before Hubbardston passed zoning, with, and placed that area in a residential agricultural zone. So, this shop is a pre-existing non-conforming use. The accessories records categorized the use of the property as store slash shop M D L ninety-four. The property was owned from nineteen ninety-four to October nineteen by Judy and Ro, and Roger Ashenbaugh, who had operated a carpet and flooring business out of the store prior to their retirement. And John and Megan Demalia purchased the property recently, in October. The Ashenbaughs met with the planning board on June twelfth of this year. They wanted to sell the property, they said, for commercial use, and came to us following a negative zoning determination on that issue by the zoning enforcement officer, Roland Jean, who's here tonight. And he advised them to seek zoning relief with the planning board from that decision. They met with us, we told them they could apply for a special permit, but they did not. So, then John Demalia applied for a zoning determination honor about October eighteenth for use of the property as a photography studio, stating in his cover letter that he and his wife were purchasing the property, and that they own the abutting land on which their home was located. On October twenty-second, the zoning enforcement officer notified that, notified them that the use was not allowed due to non-compliance with Article four point one of the zoning bylaws, which prohibit commercial uses by right in a residential zone, okay? And also advised Mr. Demalia that he could seek relief from this decision by applying for a special permit from the planning board, based on M G L forty-eight, Section ten, and Article seven, which is a special permit provision of our zoning bylaws. So, the Demalias purchased the property, and on October twenty-third, Megan Demalia and Debbie Lindsay filed this application for a special permit that's before us tonight. They also requested waivers from having to file a community impact statement and site plan review. And I believe, after looking at this, that a community impact statement is not applicable under Section eight point one, but we would have to vote tonight, if we get that far, on whether or not to waive the site plan review. So, again, anybody, that's, I think brings us up to where we start. But if made any errors that you wanna supplement it, you're welcome to do so if you're in your statements. So, first, I'd like to hear from.
Just so we're clear, you said forty-five Gardner Road in your statement, but it is two forty-five.
Yeah, two forty-five.
Yeah.
Did I say that wrong several times? I don't know, I was trying to get through. Which is once, okay. It is two forty-five. Alright, so now, we, I'm ready to hear from the petitioners.
Can we come up?
You may, and have a seat.
Please note, these are the two microphones that are required here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna hand out copies. I know you guys received this electronically too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna start off, I'm Meg Demalia. That's Debbie Lindsay. I'm gonna start by reading it to you, you guys can all follow along, and we can go through the exhibits and everything that we've done. Alright, Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you so much for allowing us to come before you today. We are here today to ask you to grant us a special permit to allow us to run our photography studio out of the property we just purchased here in town, two forty-five Gardner Road, which some of you may known as previous location of Archibald floor covering. We do understand that this property currently resides in the Hubbardston Residential Agricultural Zone, and that normally running a commercial business inside the zones would not be permitted. But as many of you are already aware, there is little backstory, story to this property. This particular property was built to be a commercial building, and had been running as a commercial property before the rezoning in two thousand eleven. And so, because of Hubbardston zoning bylaws, Section four point nine states that any structures if or uses lawfully existing on the effective date of these zoning bylaws may be continued in accordance with the provisions of General Law's Chapter forty-eight, Section six, Section four point ten. Goes on to specific, to specify that one of these non-conforming use properties has been abandoned for more than two years, that it will lose its grandfathered protection. So, even though this property is in a residential agricultural zone, this property was grandfathered and allowed to remain as a commercial property, providing that it was not abandoned for more than two years. This special permit request needs to be looked at in two separate parts. First being the grandfathered status of the property, and the second being the actual approval of a special permit allowing us to run a photography studio out of the grandfathered location. Our first step is to provide evidence that even though the Archibald floor covering ceased regular operations in two thousand fourteen, the property was never abandoned, and therefore should not lose its grandfathered status. I will now give you a brief timeline of the events in regards to this property. For the full timeline and detailed letter from the previous owners, please see Exhibit A in your packets. Do you guys wanna look at that first before I read it, or?
Is this the packet that you are giving us?
Yes, the packet that we gave you.
Okay, cause we also have exhibits.
Okay. So, Exhibit A is in there, do you want me to read the bullet points as we go?
Sure.
Okay.
You continue in the way that you want to.
The property was purchased by the Archibalds in October of nineteen ninety-four. The Archibalds ran their business, known as Archibald floor covering, out of this property from nineteen ninety-four till two thousand fourteen. In two thousand fourteen, Roger Archibald decided that he no longer wanted to run his own business, and instead, he just wanted to be an employee. So, he sold his business to Horgan Cleaners, and they rented the building and used the property as a retail storeroom and a place to store tools and machinery needed to install floor coverings. When Horgans bought the business, they purchased the accounts and customers of Archibald floor covering, but did not purchase the equipment and tools. Those remained property of Roger Archibald. Roger continued to work for Horgans after they purchased the business, working out of this location. In December of two thousand and sixteen, Horgans decided that they wanted to move their business to a new location in Westminster. Roger continued to work for Horgans after they moved their business to Westminster until March of two thousand nineteen. Even after Horgans moved from its two forty-five Gardner Road property, Roger continued to store all of his equipment necessary to perform his day-to-day job of floor covering installation until August of two thousand nineteen, when he decided to sell some of his larger equipment. On top of this, during two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen period, the building itself was listed for sale, and the Archibalds obtained, obtained an engineered septic design. They completed a perk test and obtained a disposal system construction permit. Unfortunately, the Archibalds were unable to be here tonight, but this is a timeline. This timeline is confirmed by a signed letter drafted by the Archibalds lawyer, and is signed by the Archibalds attesting to the accuracy of the timeline and the truthfulness of these facts. Please refer to letter Exhibit A in your packets.
Why don't you give us a second?
Okay.
Let us look at that.
Do you, um, is our, do you have a copy of this packet too?
I do, I can see it tonight.
Okay, alright. Not a fast reader, but.
It's okay.
Take your time, take your time.
Everybody had a chance?
I have, thank you, Madam Chair, but I'll give to the other gentlemen.
Okay, you all right? Alright, continue on. The timeline provided by the Archibalds clearly shows a continuous use of the property for commercial purposes, starting when they purchased the building in nineteen ninety-four, and ending only recently in August of two thousand nineteen, when Roger stopped working and sold his equipment. According to the Massachusetts law, the standard for determining whether a use or structure has been abandoned is a two-part test. Abandonment requires the concurrence of two factors. One, the intent to abandon, and two, voluntary conduct that carries an implication of abandonment. This has been upheld by Massachusetts law in cases of Orange v. Shea and Charleese v. Zoning Board of Appeals of Wareham. Neither of these two factors were met by anything the Archibalds have said or done. In two thousand eighteen, another land court case, in addition to stating the above cases, the court stated that even when a building is empty, that the vacancy of the property does not matter of law, doesn't, eh, sorry. Does not as a matter of law, mean its non-conforming status is not being maintained. They stated that it would require evidence to show not only that the building was vacant, but that there was no effort to market, rent, or maintain the building. And again, looking at above timeline provided by the Archibalds, you can see that that was not the case. Not only were they continuously using the building, they were also actively marketing the building by listing it for sale and getting the perk test and the disposal system construction permit. Now that we've hopefully proven to you that the property has never been abandoned by legal or common sense definition of abandonment, and so it still is grant, still has its grandfather's status under Section four point nine of the town zoning bylaws. We now ask that you consider granting us a special permit to allow us to run our photography studio out of this property. Section four point nine of the town zoning bylaws states that this is a subsequent or substantial alteration of the original non-conforming use, that it must be authorized by the special permit by the planning board, which will be granted only if the board finds that the proposed altercation, restruc, alteration, sorry.
Sorry.
Alteration, reconstruction, or extension will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. The next part of this presentation is for us to show you that we have, what we have planned, and what we would like to do. We hope that this will show you, oh my gosh, sorry. We hope that this will show you that a photography studio will not be any more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use, and will in fact be a positive influence on the surrounding area. Exhibit B, C, and D, and E in your packets, show our plans for the property. Do you want me to show you guys those as we go on, or you want me to just?
Sure, we'll flip through them. Going to page three?
Yep. Exhibit B, C, D.
B.
B, yep.
Pretty black.
So, oh yeah, I don't know why that printed so dark. It didn't yesterday, and I may, I don't know if I have.
Um, this is also just showing where the well is, and the well plan is al, already been.
This is the plot plan. This is the, yeah, the well is marked right here.
What is the plot plan? The black box?
This, so right here, I can show you, sorry, I don't know why this printed so dark. So, right here is the building, this is the parking, this is the actual building, this is my property, that's the horse farm.
So, two.
So, this black dot right here is the well, sorry.
Okay, the building roof, I can kinda make it out.
Right here.
Okay.
The well is right there, that is already in. And then the parking is in the front, I don't know why that printed so dark, it didn't yesterday.
The well is here.
And then, Exhibit C is our parking plan, which is the next page in there. It is approved for seven spots. We never have.
Excessive to our daily needs. Have you, have you measured them out?
Yes. Yep, it was all measured out.
The dimensions of them are, you know?
They're to the standard, whatever parking space it was. They're all, well, they're spray painted, but you're not gonna see all the.
Oh, they're spray painted on the land?
Yeah, you're.
Under the snow.
Under the snow.
Alright, so, but you, you mark, I think it's nine feet, and.
Yeah, it's the standard whatever parking space, it was all.
Mr. Jean could help us.
Nine by twenty.
Yeah.
Nine by twenty? You didn't get a chance to see them before it snowed, I take it?
No one's asked me to.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Exhibit D does the layout.
Exhibit D is the layout, this is the septic over here, which is not in, that is to be done by Jeff Hakula, it was just started as soon as possible, but the, the snow. And then, um.
I'm sorry, there's trailer one and two, what are they?
Those are trailers that have been, so they are big white storage trailers. They have been on the property since the Archibalds moved in there.
So, you acquired those as part of the.
We acquired those, there's, yep, there's a large one on this side too. Exhibit trailer one and trailer two are also rented and have been rented for many years.
They rented as storage.
They rented as storage units by two Hubbardston residents.
So, you acquired the, these as part of the?
We acquired everything, yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
And then Exhibit E is the inside of the building, which I'm gonna talk about in a second, do you want me to continue on in that way?
I have a question, is there any? This is the street, so you continue to keep, you, you're gonna continue to keep the parking out front?
Yep.
Okay, is there, is another truck here, or something?
Yes, another storage unit there.
Is not shown on this?
That's, it's not shown on that, I don't know why it's not, it's like attached to the building pretty much, it's right up against the building.
Are these just old truck bodies?
Yes. That one is like an actual storage unit, the big gray one, that is a.
I don't know what you call it.
So, it's like a shipping?
A shipping, yeah, yep, it's been on the property since.
We have a plan for kind of making those a little less of an eyesore and more curb appealing, because they are kind of going down sixty, not the best looking thing.
They were inherited, yes, yes.
Is that one rented as well?
That is gonna be the property of us if.
They're gonna use it.
We're gonna use that as storage, yep, yep.
Do you know if it's in the side yard setback, or?
It's right in the side yard, right against the building.
It's. How much, how much land is there between the side of the building? And the end of the property, the side of the property?
The end, the, between the sideline.
Sideline of the lot, and the edge of the.
Where the septic is gonna be.
Oh, where the septic is gonna be, there's a huge. Do you mean between where my property starts to where the truck, where the thing is? It's a very large amount of area.
That's where the septic's gonna go?
The septic is going over there, yes.
Do you have a septic plan for it?
Um, you guys have, the Board of Health has, I dropped off the septic plan again to the Board of Health last week, another plan of them. We've given them out to multiple people, Jeff Hakula has one. It is approved by the Board of Health, though, it's all signed off on.
Okay.
So, can I continue on, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Exhibit B shows the aerial view of the property and location of the proposed permitted septic system. Exhibit C is the aerial view of the parking lot with a rough parking plan. Yep, C is right here, this is the parking plan.
Yes, and then next?
Yep, Exhibit D is the hand-drawn plan for the property showing that, showing for the plans at the outside of the building. This plan includes updating the, and improving of the parking for at least seven spots, the rough location of the well and septic, as well as our plan to hide the view of the storage units located on the property using a fence.
Yeah, let's see the septic, where's the septic?
Over, over to the building.
Here.
You're.
Yep, that's, it's hidden by your finger right there, yeah.
Oh, it does say septic, I'm sorry, okay.
Um, Exhibit E is a plan for improving the interior of the building, which will include the addition of a handicap accessible bathroom, as well as a utility closet to store the well and hot water equipment.
Not the well, the well's not going in there.
The well and hot water equipment, the well equipment, the blue well tank. Can I continue on, is that okay?
Yes, please.
On top of these improvements, we will also be working on improving the appearance of the exterior of the building, including paint, landscaping, and providing a more finished parking area than the rutted dirt parking currently in place. In closing, Tiny Toes and Lobos has been part of this town for over eight years now. We have operated out of four locations in town and have zero complaints from any of our neighbors. In fact, included in your packets, did we include the two letters?
Yes.
You have, yes.
Okay. Included in your packets marked Exhibit F and Exhibit G are two letters from our existing abutters, both offering us glowing reviews. We also have had many others from town here tonight to show their support for us. For the most part, a photography studio generates less traffic than a standard residence, and does not generate any light noise or actual pollution. We participate in the schools and sponsor, as well as coach many of our local sports teams and town events. I got choked up, I never do.
She doesn't.
Nope.
You know, we love this town, and we sincerely hope that you'll grant us the special permit to allow us to stay here in town. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna hear from Mr. Jean, and then we're gonna hear from the folks out there, and we, uh. Stick around, we may ask the questions, okay?
No problem.
Alright, so, the next person addressing this issue is Mr. Jean, our zoning determiner. Yes, enforcement officer.
I'd just like to start out by saying that I don't have any opposition to this, this use. I believe that the, the existing use of the property was abandoned, and that doesn't mean that the property was abandoned. It means that the use was abandoned. The use was a retail, retail store, sold flooring, I believe that was, was abandoned. That's the reason for my determination.
Okay.
Addressing the two parts to this.
Yes.
If it can be determined that the use was never abandoned, if we can have some sort of proof that the use was never abandoned, then there is no need for a special permit, in my opinion. I would not call this a substantial change to the existing use. So, one of the other, one of the other needs to happen, but not both, in my opinion.
Can you, can you elaborate on that?
On what?
What, why you say it wouldn't constitute a different change of use, is it because it's all within the same building, what is your thinking there?
I don't believe it's any more detrimental, it's, it's not a, it's not, in my opinion, a substantial change. Because it doesn't change, maybe it's not a retail store, maybe it is, I don't really know what they do there, but. Because it doesn't change, maybe it's not a retail store, maybe it is, I don't really know what they do there, but. Like she said, it's gonna generate probably less traffic than the flooring store ever did.
Can I, so, so you're saying. We could vote that it had not, if we took a vote tonight. As a board, that it was not an abandoned use and cited the criteria. We would not need a, what are your, what do you, explain to me. Procedurely, what you are saying.
They could prove to me that it was a, that the use was never abandoned, then I would not have sent them here in the first place.
Right.
Understand that.
My, my application says that the building's been abandoned for four years.
Yes, it did say, um.
Okay.
So does this?
The building was sold in two thousand sixteen. And I believe since then, there has not been a retail use there.
The re, the, the use that's been there since two thousand sixteen has been by Archibald continuing to use the property to work out of. With the same business through Horgan's, so he was doing the same job through Horgan's.
Were, were he selling flooring, or was he strictly installing?
He was installing.
So he was a contractor.
But he was selling it to install it.
So, that's not, that's not the retail use.
So that brings us back to the need for a special permit.
So I, I believe that, I believe that the use has been abandoned for more than two years, and it requires a special permit. But I'm open to.
When?
Some sort of proof that it hasn't been abandoned.
Okay, when, when he operated it, I know he's not here to ask, but from reading the letter, it appears to me that. That he also would have cut the tile and the flooring in that shop, as well as sold it?
I honestly don't know.
He did, he had a very large machine.
Okay, alright, um.
So may I, may I ask a quick question regarding to that, are you basically indicating that? He used the two forty-five as a place where he conducted. The aspects of work that required, that were required in order for him to.
For him to work for Horgan's.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to understand. But he was not, he was not a retail store.
It was not a retail store, yeah.
They were not handing him sort of an order or anything like that, he was just simply using it as an operations place.
Yes.
Sort of like, just to get things prepped up.
We have lived there for multiple years, and you always saw his truck there, so he was always there. And that's where he kept all of his, yes, that's where he kept all of his machinery that he moved out, and he didn't move it out until we. Started the process of buying the building.
May I ask another question?
Yep, sure.
Other than the letter that you have from, uh.
Roger.
From Roger.
Yeah.
And that really, I think, goes to the point that, that, that our building inspector is trying to present here, is there any other? Proof than the word, the letter?
Right.
That would indicate that indeed there was. A, a business running out of there as it was stated originally. I mean, I, I, I'm asking this here because several months ago, they were here.
Right, they were, they moved.
And I, honestly, I got the impression at that point in time that they had not been working there for quite a long period of time.
As Archibalds formed, they had not been.
I understand that, but so, but, but this never came up.
Right.
That he was actually utilizing that space for other purposes, so I'm very surpris- surprised in a, it, it just. Because it's, it's something new, I'm not saying that it's wrong or anything like that, I'm just simply saying I'm very surprised to read this here. And read the letter that they're presenting, especially in light of the fact that. The chair, myself, I think, and other people, very specifically asked them to come up again and provide us some additional information.
Yeah, and I think that's when we stepped in to purchase the building, and they kind of.
But my, 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 my concern here is, is that it's, it's just a letter, and I, and they're not even here today.
Other thing too, is, is she's very sickly as far as we know, so I know that kind of went into the process of this whole thing when they started. When we started buying it. It, and that was back in June of this year, May? It took a long time, May of this year, when we started purchasing it, she did get very sickly, that is why he's not here, he did, when we were. Asking for all of this, we, um, he had told us his wife had pneumonia and everything, and that she wasn't well.
That would be in the summer, when they made otherwise it come back.
Yes, that was the end of the summer where she started.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have another question for Mr. Jean here, is regarding parking. Um, do you consider, do we have a requirement that parking be paved?
I don't really answer that question off the top of my head.
Would you accept their parking in terms of dimensions, the plan presented here?
There is no dimensions on it.
Right.
And of course, with parking, we are completely open to working with, you know, any of the inspectors that we need to and getting that.
So if we were, if we, if we were, I'm not saying we're gonna do this, but if we grant the special permit, one of the conditions would be.
Right.
That you present a parking.
Absolutely.
A, a, a measured.
Yep, we can present that, yep.
To scale drawing, and it is approved before you.
We are waiting for them to pave sixty-eight to, we're, we're not waiting for them, but we want them to. No, when they did the skirt in there, I don't know if anybody's driven in there, once you go in, you're stuck, you're in.
There's a lift.
There's a massive lift, so, once they, we wanna make sure that our skirt and everything is correct. When they do pave sixty-eight.
The intention of paving it.
But we have the intention of paving it, we're.
Okay, so in the parking, you would get, if you were to do a parking plan, you'd have to give all that, the extent of the pavement, the extent of the distance between. Edge of the road and.
Yep.
All the rest of it, alright. Um, we do have quite a few people that wanna speak tonight, and we also have a big agenda, can I? Should we go on and hear from the audience, we can come back and then do, ask other questions at the end?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay, um. You wanna give me that list, and maybe I'll just call people from the li- everybody signed in that wants to speak?
Everyone wants to speak? They can identify themselves, right?
Yes, well, but if we go fast.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Uh, 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 public comments, no, people didn't do this, they don't understand.
I know, I don't think we understood.
Alright, so, pub, um, people, this is just relating to the Demalia matter, if you wish to speak, you wanna raise your hand and I'll recognize you, okay. Uh, come up, state your name.
Hi, I'm Carol Brown, and I live at two three three Gardner Road.
You're gonna have to come up, cause I don't think that.
I'm Carol Brown.
Do you want us to move, is that okay?
The microphone space here, to the speakers here.
Absolutely.
I'm Carol Brown, and I live at two three three Gardner Road. And I don't have a lot planned, but with what they were saying. I go by that property quite often, and I was actually surprised to see that there was still. Carpeting and stuff like that, like by the trash on the edge of the carpet, you know, after I thought they were closed. And on many occasions, I've seen them at that property, I don't have an exact timeline because. I didn't expect to see. But it, I'm almost sure it wasn't over two years ago, it's, you know, because I was surprised myself, cause I thought they were done there. And I did see people there, and you know, things were going wrong. And I just wanted to say that because I thought of it as she was speaking, and it's like, yes, you know, I've, I've seen that, I go by there every day. So.
So you saw activity that pertained to the business that was there before?
And there was, like rolls of, end rolls of carpeting and stuff that had to be, like, maybe brought out in the trash. And, you know, the opening and closing of the, the side building thing, and so there was activity there. I just wanted to state that, that there had, I've seen activity there.
Okay, thank you.
You know, a timeline for it, but I've seen it.
An eyewitness.
Yeah.
It's a good thing, anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, oh, are you speaking about this?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I know you're here on another matter.
Ed Blatchard, twenty-three East Comet Pond Road. Uh, what I just wanted to make a comment on was the, the use, I've lived here since nineteen seventy-one. And I knew the owners and operators before the Archibalds, and, and also the Archibalds. And I know that you've said it, it, it had a retail use, and it did have a retail use, but for. For many years before they opened the retail end of it, it was just like a carpet warehouse. That stored, uh, their carpet, and if you wanted carpeting. You didn't have to go to the retail store, you could just call them up. And, and so it was really a multiple use. It was retail after a number of years of just using it as an operational type of thing. So it, it really has both uses. I, I think they only opened up the retail end of it, probably. Um, uh, this is just a, it would be a ballpark guess, it probably ran that place ten years before. As an operational, storage warehouse.
Mid-two thousands.
Rather than, rather than the retail. When they, when they expanded from carpets to tile and things like that. That's when the retail end of it started to take hold. But, uh, looking back at it historically, I would say it had a multiple use. One of retail, but also one of warehouse and operational.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's good information.
Helpful, that is helpful. Other people? Do you wish to speak tonight?
Alright, I'll go.
Sure.
Let's rip this hat off. Alright. Hi, what's going on? I'm Katie Young, Ragged Hill Road, and first off, I agree with Carol and with Ed. I grew up right down the street, I was there in that shop when it used to be a tackle and bait shop. Way back in the day with Belafatos. And then it turned into the Archibalds, which again, wasn't always totally. Quite the same kinda shop as it was. And then I drive past it probably four to six times every day, going to Gardner back and forth. And there's stuff outside all the time, there's people there all the time, even after Horgan's has left. So, that being said, I'm gonna put my economic development hat on. Um, as I sit on that board, and I just want to make it abundantly clear. From economic development standpoint. This is a business that right now, well, right now has a well, but before that had no well, had no septic. Not really valuable to pretty much any retail store. Um, they're willing to buy it, take it on, put it onto their property, make it, you know. Actually trying to do something with it, they put a well in, they're willing to put a septic in. Not only will it be good for our town. As a standpoint of having a functional building, rather than just something that nobody wants, and it's an eyesore, and it's just gonna let to rot and. Be a big shitshow. They're actually willing to put a business in it that will not only give back to our town, cause I can't even. She just touched base on a little bit of what they do for the town, between giving away photo shoots. For the mother and son night, uh, father-daughter dances. They did, um, a whole photo shoot for the state police one time. They give away more time and effort and energy, they're both Girl Scout leaders, you know, for just community events, they show up at. Pretty much most of the stuff I do, um, for special events, but. That piece of it set aside, it's also making a building more desirable for town, so. It's something that, as, like, my husband, as one of the assessors in town, looked at as like, duh, that's stupid, now we can get more money for it. Yeah, no kidding. So I don't care which way you wanna look at it, any way, shape, or form. You're taking a business that right now they're in a building they're not supposed to be in, to put in a building that they could be in, that they own, that's part of their property overall. That's on the end of town, that was a retail store, that can be a good spot. And I understand it's not a hundred percent, you know, part of the way everything's supposed to work, and, you know, I'm sorry. Jean, yes, Jean, you know, he has, obviously, his rules he has to follow, but. The way that it could easily all fit together would work so perfectly, and take this building from falling down around its ears. And becoming a big shithole eyesore soon as you drive into town, like, I can't even make it any better. I don't understand why this isn't even a thought in anyone's mind. Alright, yes, sorry.
It's okay, thank you.
So that's all I got to say.
Hope there's a censor back there.
There is no censor. You're lucky I didn't say anything worse.
Any abutters here? You wanna say anything, isn't it butter?
Sure. Danielle Jardina, two thirty-seven Gardner Road. Um, I think it'd be wonderful to have a business there that's functioning, um, you know, to the public and. Like Katie said, they do a lot for the community, and I think it'd be great for them to have that space, they make it their own.
Thank you.
And also the other butter is Meg, Meg himself, so, on the other side of the road.
You live across.
Across.
No, I'm, I'm presenting this, but I live next door, I'm two forty-three.
Yes, but you're also the owner, co- co- owner of the business, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Understood, thank you.
Properties surrounds, like, the side, the back in a partial of.
Yes, 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 no, I'm aware of that, I'm sorry, I was getting you mixed up with your.
The other one.
With Debbie.
Happens on top.
I'm sorry, no, you don't look anything alike, it's not excusable, alright, um, we did get a letter. Christina notified me today about this, so I'll let Christina present it.
Because it is a, uh, public hearing, I didn't receive a, an email.
Oh, you can say that.
Can you hear though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Stating, uh, this is from Mallory Seaman, she is the, uh, land use admin. Stating, good afternoon, I just wanted to write a quick note to advise that I had an anonymous resident come in concerned with the tree harvesting. Taking place at two forty-five Gardner Road, the resident was questioning conservation, had done a site walk at the property. To okay tree cutting, and to ensure that the wetlands were not being encroached on. Um, Mallory does not have anything in her records showing a site walk. She just wanted to state that, that we had someone, she had someone come in, was not willing to be.
So, can I, can we come back up, or are you good? You, you, so, our septic is, the only thing cut down are trees for the septic by the tree company that is hired to cut down the trees.
So the only trees that were cut down were the ones that have been marked and approved in the, the septic plan that was approved by the town.
They have, the Board of Health, we've already contacted and spoke with them, they have the approved meeting minutes and everything. For when the septic plan was approved, and I'm pretty sure that includes a walk around, right, with.
Well, the Conservation Commission, if, if, if there's wetlands involved, you can apply to them.
Right.
Uh, but I don't think the Board of Health would approve a septic system in wetlands.
Yeah, no.
Nope, we haven't taken any trees down, we're not part of that approved septic plan, so I'm not sure that that's.
That's a good clarification.
Okay, that's a good clarification point. Um, do you? Do, I, we, before we close the public hearing, are there questions? Um, from the board that you need, that you wanna ask to either the, the building inspector or the applicants, anyone?
I have one question, uh, may- maybe a few, and, and, I don't mean to, come over here. There are three lots involved here that you purchased together, is that correct?
No, um, no, I own, I own, um, two forty-three, I can come up and show you quickly, is that okay?
If you can just quickly show me on the plot, but I'm just trying to understand, what, what belongs to whom?
This is my house, right here.
Yep.
So this is the barn and the horses.
Yep.
Driveway, and just property where the animals are, my house is up here, right here, and then this is, what, ten acres, nine acres, whatever it is. That's all owned by us too, my house is here, this is just land, it's not clear.
Is the property.
The property, the photography studio, yeah.
So it's all together, not quite eight acre, not quite ten acres they own, nine point something.
Yes, nine point.
Nine point three three?
Yeah, whatever it is.
This acre, the one that the shop is on, is one point nine, but it's misidentified in the assessor's records as being larger than that.
Yeah, it's identified as three point something, so.
Three three, and the Archibalds pointed that out, that was incorrect.
So I'm not really sure where.
Plot plan that was part of your original submission.
Yep.
Okay.
That does verify that it's one.
Okay, so yeah, this is me and me and.
And you, and, and this purch- the, the. Lot, one eighty-eight was purchased when?
Uh, October twenty-first.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Okay, but, but one eighty and one eighty-nine were already in.
That was five and a half years ago, we've been there.
I, thank you, I understand now, very good. Uh, and at, at no point in time did you attempt, uh, to. Merge any of these two lots with your principal residents?
No, it's all separate lots.
Yeah, but, I mean, a- and, and you made no attempt to try to merge these lots and, and consolidate them?
No, that property's owned by the business, so.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
Her and her family own that, I own the business with them, so the business is a completely separate.
Gotcha, so, so this, this is a separate entity, legal entity that owns this, very good, thank you, that, that, that answers.
Okay, are there other questions?
Ed Blatchard again, from twenty-three East Comet Pond Road. You know, I've served on the planning board for over five years, on the, uh, on the zoning board of a field for fifteen. So I, I fully respect your, uh, your, your looking into the grandfathering end of it. Also, I would say though, that if there is a nebulous area in grandfathering. We certainly would like to hopefully, uh, be in favor of a new business coming to town. Uh, we, we, I know we've talked about the planning board and, and also doing things that would be pro-business and that. Um, I know that property well, and I don't think that the, uh, the, uh, snapping of pictures. Is gonna create a lot of noise for any of the neighbors or anything like that. So I guess I would, uh, I would ask the planning board to take a serious look at, um. Saying that. saying that if, if it is a grandfathered use according to the documentation that they submitted, that, uh, they could take a, a look at doing it that way versus going through a whole, uh, special permit process.
Well, this is a special permit process at this point, right? You would agree?
Yes.
But that isn't, that is a critical finding, and to be able to grant a special permit.
Can I ask one more question regarding, what's, what are your expected, uh, hours of operation?
We work by appointment.
You work by appointment?
We work by appointment. Um, so we average two to three sessions a day, so we're there maybe four hours a day.
But it's usually during...
During the day, yeah.
Okay.
We can't take pictures.
Plus weekends, potentially?
Yeah, but always during the day, we're never there at night. Um, in fact, we can't take pictures once it gets dark, so, we're, we're home at night.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? If not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing and begin the deliberation. Oh, yes.
I think we have one additional item here.
How can you can't take pictures at night?
Outside.
Because people like our out, people like outside and natural lighting. I mean, we do, we do some flash photography, but most of our clients come to us for the ru- rural setting that we're in, and they like the outside.
Yeah, our flash photography is like newborns and indoor, like, little babies inside. Everything else we do is pretty much outside.
Is there a concern because of that?
No, not at all, I was just curious, and my camera works at night.
It works with flash, we don't do flash, we don't use flash.
So, so will your landscaping plans facilitate that?
We like the rural setting, so just the trees and the, you know, existing...
We're gonna put in trees, we're gonna do a ton of, like, landscaping work.
So, it's gonna be part, the ex, what I'm trying to get at is the exterior is part of your business too.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Alright, alright. Can we have a, anybody else? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to close the, the public hearing portion of this.
One second. Are, do you put, do you develop your own pictures, or?
Yeah.
We don't.
We don't know, we don't do any of that, so that's not chemicals, nothing.
There's no chemicals involved.
So, is the building more unless it's gonna be for picture-taking?
Yes, that's all it is.
Okay.
Public hearing, you wanna close it, you wanna make a motion?
Madam Chair, at this point, I would like to put forth a motion, which is to close the public hearing section, and, uh, therefore, uh, bringing this part to conclusion.
Okay, second, anyone? All fair? No more further discussion? Okay, good. So now, we, uh, we need to begin to go through the deliberation process of this, which is quite, which we, we are required for a special permit to make a number of findings. And they require votes, and they require, you would, um, that we not vote en masse, but that we say, like, lived all yes, you know, and go down?
Steiger, yes or no, right?
Steiger, yes, you got it, right? So, the findings, um, so there are findings. So, the first motion would be, and maybe I can make it, Chair doesn't usually make a motion, but, motion, I move that the board find, now what we're required to find is that the proposed photography studio will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than is the prior non-conforming use as a carpet and flooring sales shop.
Madam Chair, at this point in time, we would like to second that motion.
Okay, now, we are supposed to, before we vote on it, uh, just make a note of the supporting facts. So, I mean, a lot, there have been a lot of facts stated here, but, one of the facts is it, it won't generate a lot of traffic, substantially more traffic. We have...
We also believe that this is not going to be any traffic necessarily, other than local people, maybe some people from around the community and area. It's not like you're flying in people from Detroit or something like that, right?
Yeah.
Or some other place.
And we also have, uh, supporting testimony of, uh, Roland Jean, who said, he, he, his opinion, having looked at the situation.
Yeah.
So, maybe we don't need to have further discussion on that, are we ready to take a vote? Again, the motion is that the board find the studio would be not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the carpet and flooring shop was. Ready to vote? Okay, so lived all yes?
Steiger, yes. Boisson, yes. You boy, yes.
Okay. The second thing we have to find is that, and this is the toughie, but we've now got some supporting documentation on this, that the prior non-conforming use was not abandoned or discontinued for a period of two years or more, and replaced by a non-conforming use. So, the motion would be, I move that the board find the property was not abandoned or discontinued for a period of two or more years or replaced by a non-conforming use. And we can rely on the, I think, the fact, testimony here, but we need to second to the motion?
Do you wanna second that one? 'Cause I, I have some discussion items on that one.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second, okay, discussion, run it up.
So, at this point in time, as I said, I was surprised to see this letter from the Archibald's. It's, it's, it, it's good, I'm very happy to hear this here. I'm also very happy to hear corroborating evidence from individuals who lived in the neighborhood, as well as Mr. Blanchard, for example, and other individuals. I think what's very important here, and I'm just stating th- this here, I mean, economic development is fantastic and so forth, but we have to do this here orderly, and this is why I want to bring this up. Right-sized businesses are important for us, but we also don't wanna just go ahead and willy-nilly just open this up. This is a, this is a residential district. And so, as a result of that, we gotta be very careful when we, when we put forth a, a special permit like this here, that we're respecting why this was actually put up forth. At this point in time, I do respect that you have a letter, and there's no reason for me to believe that the Archibald's would put forth in that letter anything that is not true. And I think the corroboration that we have from other people basically attests to this here. And so, from that perspective, I'm relieved to hear that. Uh, I wish that this had come up a little bit earlier, and this is for the word for the wiser, especially if there's other individuals who may have plans in the future to open up businesses, such as the one that the Malus want to open up, or this, this, this studio wants to open up, to make sure that you are validating what you're actually purchasing, and also make sure that what you're doing follows the process. Because without that, uh, the, the, the board here is handcuffed. And so, uh, we, we're not going to be bending rules and laws because it sounds good. And so, I think tha- that's really the, 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 the important element that I want to make sure that everybody understands here. Uh, and that's it.
I'd like to add that I found persuasive, the, I guess you would call it testimony, I mean, you know, it's, the, the statements made here in the public session.
Yeah.
That supported the fact that it's, it was a store, a shop as well as a store.
Yeah.
And I do note that the commercial use that the assessors have given it is shop slash store. So, um, I think, I think there is some credibility to, to, to that, that at least part of that operation remained as a shop into the very, until very recently.
Okay.
Alright, other, other comments? If not, again, repeating the motion is, I move that the board find that the property was not abandoned or discontinued for a period of two or more years or replaced by a non-conforming use. So, lived all I.
Given the evidence as presented from Sir Steiger, aye.
Boisson, yes.
Josh DuBois, aye, yes.
Okay. We move on to findings required for a special permit, which also have to be done the same way as I read the, um, the articles on how to do this. Um, this is bylaws, our bylaw's section seven point five. Uh, the first, the finding we have to make is that the proposed use as approved or modified will not have an unacceptable, I'm sorry. The proposed use as mod, as approved or modified will have an acceptable environmental impact. So, I will, I can make that motion as well. I move that, uh, we make a finding that the propos, that the use as proposed or modified will have an acceptable environmental impact. Second?
I would like to second that motion.
So, there's discussion about the environmental impact has been mentioned, I think the issue with the tree cutting was clarified. You've said there's no processing of these pictures on site.
There's no chemicals or anything that got that stored.
No, no, it's all digital. We send you your images, you go online, you download them, you print them wherever you choose.
Are there any other concerns about the environmental impact which wouldn't, which would prevent us from making this finding? Okay.
It was seconded.
I seconded.
Okay. So, are we ready to vote that the proposed use will not have, or, will, I'm sorry, will have, will have an acceptable environmental impact?
Yes, we're ready.
Lived all yes.
Steiger, yes.
Boisson, yes.
DuBois, yes.
Second finding we must make is that the use will be consistent with the land use objectives of the town. Taken as a totality, right? So, I move that we make that finding.
I second the motion.
We have discussions about whether the use will be consistent with land use objectives of the town. And I would say, one of the objectives of the town is if you're gonna continue a non-conforming use, it fits the criteria, which this would apparently do, and to develop business, right?
Uh, developing business, which is important, and I think it's, it's a community-based business, which I think is an important element to consider, um, from that perspective.
So, are we ready to make that finding? I move that we find that the use will be consistent with the land use objectives of the town?
You're ready?
Yeah.
I did second that.
Oh, you did, okay. Lived all I?
Steiger, aye. Boisson, yes.
DuBois, yes.
Okay. Third finding we have to make, there's only four, so don't give up. The proposed use will comply with zoning bylaws, and in particular, one point two. One point two is the purpose section of our zoning bylaw, which are, um, general statements about, you know, protecting the, the, well...
Show me the reason.
Read them, it's quick.
So, first one is to ensure realization of the general statement and purpose of declared under chapter forty-eight of the general laws. To protect the right of every resident of the town of Hubbardston to clean air and water, freedom of ex, from excess, excessive and unnecessary noise or odors, and to the natural scenic, historic and aesthetic qualities of the environment as declared under article, uh, forty-nine of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. To permit and ensure planned orderly growth in the town of Hubbardston, to provide for compatible development and best use of the town's land and resources, and finally, to provide adequate housing and services to residents, visitors and employees in the town of Hubbardston.
So, we're not voting that, that this use accomplishes all those grand objectives, but that it will comply, that it won't be adverse to those purposes, right?
I'd like to second that motion fi- finding.
Yes, okay. Any more further discussion? Hearing non, lived all yes?
Steiger, yes.
Boisson, yes.
DuBois, yes.
Okay, and then the final one, and then we'll take a grand vote. And then we have to talk about site plan review too. So, the final finding we're, we have to make is, the proposed use will comply with the bylaws or regulations of the town and applicable laws and regulations of the Commonwealth. So, I'll make the motion that we make that finding.
I will second that motion.
Okay, and there's discussion, I would say we've had significant discussion that this fits the criteria, because it was not abandoned and, and, uh, continuation of a non-conforming pre-existing use is allowed in a residential zone if it has not been abandoned and meets these, all these criteria.
Yep, and it also puts back into productive use, piece of property.
Okay, any further discussion on this? We made, we made a motion, you seconded it?
I did.
Okay, lived all I?
Steiger, aye. Boisson, aye.
DuBois, aye, yes.
Okay, so, final thing before we vote to approve or disapprove the, uh, special permit is do we wish to waive the requirement for a site plan review, which they are requesting? A site plan review requires a lot of things. Delineation of wetlands, it would also include your parking plan, it would include... Uh, so I, I open that for discussion. They've asked for a waiver, we can't approve it without either making a waiver or requiring them to submit it. Uh, much of the criteria in site plan review does not particularly affect them. Um, and that we can't attach a condition, so if our primary concern is, um, that we see the final approved septic system and that you present a parking plan that meets the parking bylaw and it's approved by the...
Paving.
Um, that's something you would look at, right, parking plan for us?
I could, yes.
Yes. Um, in, in lieu of a whole full site plan review, that's one thing we could do. So, I want you guys to think about it, I just wanted to get us through these findings, so, I'll take a motion from somebody else or ideas on that. We can make a motion and discuss it. With a motion to grant the waiver of site plan review.
With the condition?
With, with conditions to be determined after we, with, with conditions, alright, we'd have to put the conditions in.
Correct. And I think you've stated some of them already.
With a, provided they produce a parking plan that conforms with our parking bylaw and is approved by our building inspector.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And that they present to us, because we don't have it, the septic plan.
The septic.
It's in one of these offices, they dropped it off, haven't you?
Did you have it?
I gave it to Board of Health.
It was not given to the planning board.
Can you get it to us, please?
Absolutely. I have, yeah, I have another copy, I've been running around too.
Okay.
That's fine, if you can hand this to Christina.
Yeah.
Christine is, uh, is, is, is the person to go to.
Um, and with the understanding that you're not alar, enlarging the footprint of the building in any way, and that your, would be a condition.
Okay.
Perhaps, and also that you do provide screening or removal of the truck bodies, one, one way or the other.
So, we have to remove them, or we can't just put a fence over them?
Or screen them.
Screen them.
Uh, one or the other.
Uh, yeah, that's... Yeah, we're putting a fence up no matter what.
As a condition, that you would...
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
These are the trailers, right?
The trailers, the two.
Yeah, we don't wanna look at them. We don't wanna look at them either, we...
Right, well, I mean, if, if they're in use and they're sound, I think, uh, a c, a further condition would be that if they are no longer in use, you will remove them, when the leases expire, you would remove them.
We will remove them.
So, can we have, uh, just a itemization of these items that we are putting as part of the i, you know?
Okay, I have five conditions. One, um, that they present the septic plans.
Yes, it...
Two, that they provide a parking plan that is, uh, approved by the CEO. Uh, three, that they are not enlarging the footprint of the building. Uh, four, that they are providing screening or removal of the trailers, and then, five, they, they will remove those, uh, when they are no longer in use.
Correct.
Okay, and that would all be conditions that would allow us to waive site plan.
Okay.
Impose those conditions and waive site plan. Alright, so...
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
So, I'd like to present a motion that the waiver of the site plan be conditioned based on the five criteria that were mentioned earlier.
And that those be conditions of a special permit.
And they be part of the special permit, yes, conditions of the special permit.
Second, anyone?
Second.
I guess we should give our names, so lived all I?
Steiger, aye.
Boisson, aye.
DuBois, yes.
Okay, and then, so a final vote, um, is to approve the special permit, you can do it, this to...
Is to approve or disapprove a special permit to allow the land and building located at two forty-five Gardner Road to be used as a photography studio, subject to the following terms and conditions.
The terms and conditions just folded, so we need to modify that a little. So, it would be vote to approve, the ones we just...
Which are the conditions for the waiver of the site plan?
Right, but to make it clear, this is a motion to approve.
Okay, so...
Okay.
So, this is, okay, very good, so...
Not disapprove, it's, I didn't know which way it was gonna go, okay.
Yep, that's fine. So, at this point in time, I'd like to put a motion, which is to approve a special permit to allow the land and building located at two forty-five Gardner Road to be used as a photography studio, subject to the terms and conditions set forth as part of the waiver required by the site plan as part of the special permit.
Well done, so, I second. Okay, all fair? Lived all I?
Steiger, aye.
Boisson, aye, yes.
Josh DuBois, aye, yes.
Okay, so, it's been granted, but it's subject to your getting a written decision, which we have ninety days to get to you, but we will try to do it sooner. Okay, and you, you can't commence business until you have that and it's recorded.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for everybody that came.
Thank you.
We have a big agenda, so thank you also for the people that waited, but we're gonna move along.
Yep.
Okay, the next, uh, item of business is, um...
Uh, before we continue, I think we need to maybe ensure that Mr...
You gotta get John back, he's right, he just walked in.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about you in the cold, you got the good news?
My hands are very cold.
Yes, they are cold. You wanna, I wanna little, is that, is there water in that?
Yes.
There is some water in the bubbler.
I'm just gonna, let's take just one minute break, and let me get a glass of water, let, let John warm up.
It's gonna take more than a minute.
My foot's asleep. No, but there's no cups, this is not helpful.
Just put, put your mouth under it.
Is it in your closet?
Check in this closet.
Don't make the meeting shorter. It'll make the meeting shorter.
It's alright, Craig, thanks. Oh. Anybody else? You can pass them out. Francois?
I'm all set, thank you.
Anybody? Okay. Alright, alright. Roland, thank you for coming.
Thank you, yes.
You're welcome.
And happy birthday to Christina, too. She, I get, no, she reminded me of these things.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Are you satisfied with her?
Yeah, yeah.
And, we are, I think we are done with you, thank you. I mean, you're welcome to stay, we have a lively group. Um-
I prefer to go, if it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we really do appreciate your coming.
Thanks for your input.
It was extremely helpful, thank you. Okay, um, next person on our agenda is Ed Blanchard again, who wants to make a request for inclusion regarding, statements regarding solar and marijuana. And I guess we have these two underneath your agenda packet.
Yep, have that, thank you.
These are his notes, so we'll just introduce to the board. I think I've read these before, right? You just, these were emailed.
I believe we have these emailed. Thank you for, Christina, for making all those copies for the board for me, I appreciate that. And thank you to the planning board for, uh, for serving voluntarily on the planning board and shaping our town, appreciate that a lot. Um, I'm here again, because I've brought this matter, uh, before, the former planning boards on two occasions, and, uh, uh, three strikes and I'm out, I guess, but I'm back, because I feel strongly about it. Uh, if we look at our, our survey in nineteen eighty-nine, and our survey that was done in two thousand seventeen, which you don't need to look at. Um, the number one reason why people moved to Hubbardston is because of its rural character. And I think that, uh, having lived here since seventy-one, it's still something I greatly appreciate, having a rural character. So, I'm here because of, of a concern regarding, uh, putting commercial business into a residential area. And after listening to, uh, what we just went through, uh, I like to see that, uh, you know, that kind of scrutiny before somebody can, uh, make that kind of a change in a residential area. But we have two things, one is solar and the other is retail marijuana, that can be placed according to our bylaws in any district in the town. So, you just bought a nice three hundred thousand dollar colonial home in Hubbardston, and all of a sudden, your neighbor thinks that it'd be good income for them to put a twenty thousand square foot, which is just under half an acre, solar farm on their property of two acres. Um, it, it requires site plan review, which is, gives us some coverage. But I have to say, and, and, and the solar farms are a good thing to have, and we should have the ability for solar, I'm not against solar in any way. If somebody wants to create a, uh, you know, put solar on their rooftops, or however they'd like to do it for their own personal use, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. What concerns me is that once you go to, uh, half an acre, twenty thousand square foot or greater, solar farm, that's really a commercial use. And now you're putting it into a private neighborhood, which could really affect the, the real estate values of those neighbors. And also have, uh, gone around and looked at the existing solar farms that we have here, and have taken pictures that I submitted to the board previously, about what it looks like from the road, because all the solar farms are supposed to have a certain cover and shrubbery and that, so you don't see them. But that's not really the case. Uh, you can see most of them from the road, there's a couple that are, that are well done, and, and you can't. But if you're living in the house next to the twenty thousand square foot solar farm, um, you can be on your second floor, and if you look out from the second floor, what are you gonna see? You're gonna see a half an acre of solar farms. And I really think that, uh, this, when this passed, this passed about, uh, two years ago, I think it is now. Um, it passed, and I think it passed because basically there was a, a, a trust in the planning board that why would they present something to the town that wasn't good for the town? I think that in the past, um, perhaps the town was looking at the income, because, uh, some of these solar farms generate good income for the town, and I'm not against that. What I'm really here for is, if we're gonna put solar farms in Hubbardston, which makes sense, let's plan for it, let's plan where we wanna put them, let's not just let the current law that we have now, all of a sudden, uh, you never know when's one's gonna come up, whether it be three of them, four of them, five of them, or whatever. But we should be planning for the town of Hubbardston and the residents of this town, and be protecting them and their property from not being devalued by a commercial operation, uh, next door to them. So, my request for the planning board is to, this would, would normally, a, a, a change of this nature would come up at an annual town meeting, which won't be until next June probably, but between now and then, I, I'd like to ask you to put on your agenda, um, taking a look at the solar bylaw, and doing one of a couple of things that could be done. One, allowing only commercial, allowing only the twenty thousand square foot solar farms to be done in our designated commercial area. That would be one way we could handle it. The other way it could be handled is by having an overlay district, and, uh, that's what a lot of other towns did. I did an analysis, uh, which is part of your planning board records, of what other towns in the surrounding community have done. And an overlay district can make great sense, because there are some areas in town that aren't commercially zoned, but would be, uh, a great opportunity for a solar farm.
The gravel pits.
Take the gravel pit down here, uh, that is, has, has applied, I mean, it's perfect, it's, it's, you know, there's no neighbors, and, uh, you can't see it from the road, and it's a gravel pit that's, uh, you know, uh, has all the gravel removed, and it's basically a dead gravel pit. And we have about six or seven or other of those in town that are, uh, perhaps would be great sites. So, I guess, um, it wouldn't take much to take a look at the town and do an overlay district of, of where they could be. And maybe the overlay district would include all of the commercial, or maybe part of the commercial. But with an overlay district, it would allow, if there was certain areas that were, um, in a residential area, but made perfect sense, then that land could be put into the overlay district. I think it would have to be done by a public hearing to do that.
Yeah, any change, any change in zoning laws requires a public hearing and a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
Yeah, but I think that would give us, uh, that would give us good protection, and, um, and I think that, uh, I think it would pass at town meeting if it were presented properly. And, uh, I have two ways of doing this. I could do it by, um, I could do it by citizen petition.
Mm-hmm.
And get thirty signatures, which I'm sure I could find and do. But I don't like to see town zoning bylaws changed by, uh, citizen petition. I would much rather have them done by youth planning board. So, I'd like to see if you could add that to your agenda between now and the next, um, uh, town meeting, annual town meeting. Thank you.
Another, another option that towns have done is, uh, do a moratorium to stud- for six months to develop a new map.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there are, there are some possibilities. We will consider, we, we don't, it's not that we don't take seriously what you say, you see our plate is very full, so, we will, yeah, Craig.
Uh, just a small correction, I know you said that you drove around and scoped out some, uh, solar farms. We did pass the screening zoning bylaw, that's under section twenty point three, point ten, point two, subsection C, that has to hide it from abutting neighbors.
I know we have that law on the books.
Yeah.
However-
I'm just saying-
However, execution of that has not been according to the bylaw.
Not been consistent.
Well, there's only, that only got passed two years ago.
Yep.
And we've had one or two solar farms since then. So, I'm just saying that, that, that zoning bylaw did not cover every single solar farm that you see from the road.
Right, yeah.
That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I appreciate the correction.
I do think we have a lot, a lot of gravel, uh, really acres and acres and acres of what is basically, uh, gray fields, you know?
Yeah, and, and, and in good locations, next to main, next to, next to Route sixty-eight, with access to electric to Gardner.
But it's almost all in residential agriculture. There's no division really between agriculture and residential, they're all the same. So, the issue is, you know, how do you, how do you do this? But we have asked Christina to look in on getting us a seminar on overlay districts.
Oh.
And, uh, to give us some help with that, and we may have some help from the regional planning commission on that as well. So, we take seriously what you have to say.
Right, you go.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, yeah, the second one is the, uh, the same situation is for the marijuana bylaw that was passed at the same timeframe, about two years ago. And that allows for the sale, a retail sale of marijuana in any district in the town as well. Not in the commercial district, uh, in, in any district, uh, we can have retail marijuana sales. And also, in any district, we can have, um, the large warehouses that are necessary to grow marijuana in, uh, in Hubbardston. So, um, here again, we're, we're taking a commercial business, and we're allowing it to be anywhere in our town. So, now, you could take the town center district, and someone decides to grow marijuana there, or, I mean, I think that's my special, special permit as well.
They are in there, just to correct the record, um, in, all, all marijuana growing requires a special permit, but in a residential district, it's only outdoor growing, and it's only up to five thousand square feet. It's a tier one in residential agriculture, so that's not a big enterprise, outdoor is five thousand square feet.
Well, it's twice, twice the size of a twenty-four hundred square foot home, yep, but it's still- And I, and I understand the agricultural end of it, too, because if we're residentially agricultural, that certainly probably could qualify as a crop, because it is a crop. But it's a crop that requires substantial buildings in order to do it.
Well, actually-
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna put in a five thousand square foot warehouse.
We do, we do need to look at this bylaw again, because it, it has just some technical things that are odd about it.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think it would be a matter of, we certainly don't wanna thwart the will of the town, it was a big vote to approve this, overwhelming.
No, it wasn't, it was, it was fifty-four percent voted for it.
Okay, I thought it was a larger percent.
But what the fifty-four percent of Hubbardston voters for was to allow it in Massachusetts. It was not to allow it in Hubbardston. It was to allow, it was a state vote, that they voted fifty-four percent in favor of.
I think what the chair is referring to is-
Is our bylaw.
Is the bylaw itself. The bylaw was approved by, uh, by-
Town meeting.
Oh, the bylaw was approved, yeah.
Yeah, two thousand eighteen, so we're not gonna do, we're not gonna try to thwart that will, but it could be possibly, um, you know, modified, and it should be modified to some degree.
Yeah, I, you know, personally, I think, uh, given, uh, you know, all the recent deaths we've had in, in vaping, and, uh, and there's still, the jury's out as to whether it's a gateway drug to cocaine and crack and other things. You could give, you could give the town the opportunity to vote on multiple things, you could vote on whether they want to see it in Hubbardston at all, or modified and only in areas and zoning districts that it truly makes sense to be in.
We will take a look at these.
Especially the retail end of it, because if you had, I mean, I don't know how many home, we have over three hundred home occupations in Hubbardston. So, I don't know whether, I haven't read that bylaw close enough to know whether I could be selling it out of my home or not, but I may have to look at that.
Um, just, uh, state something on that also. You know, this bylaw is not perfect by any means. It, you know, could use some tinkering around, but if we didn't get something on the books when we did this, uh, it was kinda open season where anybody could've come in, set up shop wherever they wanted, and we had no say about it whatsoever.
I agree with that, I remember that being a bylaw.
And that's how that bylaw got there.
Yeah. So, we have bylaws, and, you know, now and then we have to take, like the signed bylaw, probably about ten, fifteen years old.
Been worked on.
Needs to be tweaked, and, and, you know, that's part of what makes us better planning wise, is we have good ones, we, we leave them alone if we have ones that need tweaking.
Yep.
I'm asking the board if they would take a look at the solar and the marijuana.
I'll make a motion to, uh, that we put reexamination of these two bylaws on the agenda as items for the next meeting.
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you kindly.
And we will let you know.
Thank you, Ed, appreciate your input.
Okay. Um, Mr. Christopher, who's been waiting a long time. We, we had, some of us here had, um, the opportunity to meet Mr. Christopher a week ago Saturday, when we went on a site tour. But that's not what you're here about. You are here about, uh, proposing, the proposals for the, am I saying it, Phalen, is that right?
Fall line.
Fall line.
Fall line.
Fall line, I got it.
Right, so-
All in line.
Fall, fall line.
I, I don't mind sitting here, because it's always good to see how other planning boards work, because I'm on my own town planning board.
What type's your town?
Lancaster.
Oh.
So.
Alright.
Yes, and we're facing massive development.
Really?
Uh, two, two million square feet.
I have a letter from you, it should be in the package, everybody?
They have that, too?
Yes.
And I have all kinds of notes over it, but why don't you describe what it is that they wanna do?
There's a little bit of a story here. Um, Falline, uh, the principal of Falline is Dr. Joey Edso. She is a professor and research scientist at, uh, University of Massachusetts Lowell. And, uh, she purchased this property back in nineteen sixty-three, uh, after it had been restored. Uh, I was the principal, uh, and company that did the restoration, uh, for Mark Andrews, the prior owner. And you also have a letter relative to what the, the written record is with DEP, uh, the town, and all that sort of stuff. So, basically, uh, Dr. Edso, uh, bought this property primarily for her dogs. She, uh, is a pretty busy woman, and has one hobby, and that is her dogs. She trains these dogs in, uh, a competitive fashion. Uh, basically, they're very expensive dogs, some of them are a lot smarter than I am. And, uh, as we have continued to work on the property, um, we've, uh, added features, we've added a pond, a training pond, and things like that. So, earlier this year, she came to me and said, "I would like to put in a well for water for the dogs." Okay, not a big deal. Then she said, "But, you know, sometimes my friends with dogs come here, and they stay on a weekend with me to train their dogs, too." I said, "That's very nice." She said, "Well, you know, they have tent trailers, and we've been using a porta potty." And she said, "I would like to do a dump station for the tent trailers." And I said, "Well, I think you have a problem." I said, "If you're gonna do that, you and I have talked about you, uh, building a home here at some point." And I said, "If you're going to have any kind of, uh, septic, uh, equipment, that perhaps it should be, uh, attached-" And I said, if you're going to have any kind of, uh, septic, uh, equipment, that perhaps it should be, uh, attached with the home. And secondly, I said, if you're gonna put in a well, you're gonna have to bring in, uh, power. So I think you need a, a broader plan than just dig a well and put in a dump station. So, uh, she elaborated further and she says, well, you know, could I add four or five parking spots for my tent trailers, which are coming anyway? And I said, to be honest with you, I think that might require a special permit and maybe we ought to talk to the planning board. So that's why we're here.
Okay, can I, can we ask you a few questions?
Please do.
All right, so I, I saw your map. So my first question is, what is presently on that property? Kennels? Is there some kind of building the dogs live in?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, they live with her and she brings them or?
These people keep dogs in their homes.
Okay.
And they come in there, little tent trailers, and most of them have RVs.
Okay.
And most of them have two or three dogs.
Okay.
And they drive to the site and they bring their water for the dogs. They bring food for the dogs and things like this. I wanna make this perfectly clear to the board. This is all about the dogs. It's not a commercial enterprise. There are no fees, no funds to transfer. It's basically a group of her friends that get together to train their dogs. The amount of time that they spend on the site, um, I doubt very much that Doctor Edso is there more than thirty or thirty-five days a year.
Wow. Well, I did a little bit of research on your, from what I could glean from this. Um, mobile homes, if you would like, you know, mobile home parks are pretty discouraged kind of use, which you can understand.
I certainly don't do that.
They're not, they're, they're defined in our bylaw as not including manufactured homes. Uh, but they are defined and they're not an allowed use in a residential zone, which is what this land is in. Okay? So, um, what, but the lot, in terms of a house lot, the lot has a hundred and fifty-one, according to the plan, you'd have to like verify it, but has a hundred and fifty-one feet of frontage.
Yes.
So it's, so qualifying then sixty-eight acres or something like, it's a big lot.
Yes.
So what qualifies is a, um, estate lot.
Estate lot, that's correct.
Yeah, so they could, so you could do that, so you could put a house on it.
We had that established last year.
Okay.
We subdivided, uh, the property, uh, last year to benefit, uh, the carpenters who live next door.
With a plan that we did?
Yes.
It's been more than a year ago. I don't remember it, but.
Uh, just about.
Maybe I signed it. I don't know. I don't remember.
No, you didn't sign it. You were not here then.
Okay. What did, what did you do?
Basically, what we did was the carpenters came to us and asked if, uh, Doctor Edso and Fall Line would be willing to sell them a, uh, piece of property to increase their frontage.
This is where we went in, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Wait, you sold it, the carpenters you're talking about?
The carpenters, yes.
Okay.
So, uh, I said to Doctor Edso, they're looking for fourteen feet. And the purpose of them asking us to give them or buy from, uh, Fall Line the fourteen feet was to, A, make the adjoining lot a buildable lot and B, to take their original residence, which was a non-conforming lot and make it slightly less non-conforming. As part of this process and the subdivision, we had the Fall Line property established as an estate lot. And I think you'll see a little note on the side there that testifies to that.
There it contains about nine, five, fifteen, fifty-six point nine acres? So is this one fifty, is this one fifty-one from this dot to this dot or from this point to?
It's from this dot to this dot. This is the roughly twenty-two hundred square feet.
Okay, so it doesn't include the fourteen. It's fourteen in, okay, so yeah, okay.
Total frontage at this point in time is a hundred and sixty-five.
No, it's a hundred and fifty-one.
No, no, so it's a hundred and fifty-one plus the fourteen or everything together is, okay, gotcha.
Just to that point right there.
So now these, it's these two dots, these heavily marked dots.
So essentially, what, uh, this allowed the carpenters do, because they had all this open space, was to, uh, get the proper frontage for a buildable lot. And where their home was over here, which was a, a non-conforming lot, it allowed them to make their lot less non-conforming. And the purpose of making it less non-conforming is that they would have some access out to their backyard.
But you still have a hundred and fifty-one feet of frontage.
Yeah.
Okay. This is helpful.
Whereas before you didn't.
No.
No, we had more.
We had more. They sold fourteen feet of it, but they saved enough for their estate lot. So you have an estate lot. You, that's all you can do is put one house in it, on it, unless you wanna run a road in and go through subdivision and put like a cul-de-sac or a loop road or something like that, which I don't think you wanna do. So you have an estate lot, you can put in one house, you have, you have one house. You can put up to four units in with a special permit if you wanted to do a bigger building, because you've got the land that would do that.
Right.
Um, I don't think there's any law that would prevent RV campers from coming in and parking on like a driveway or something.
Temporarily.
Temporarily, but they can't be, they can't be anchored to a slab.
They would not be. They would not be.
It would be driven in and then driven out within a certain period of time.
Usually on a weekend.
Yeah.
They're not there all week.
Well, that was my next question. So typically, these activities that are described by you earlier, these are things that happen over two, three day period typically on a weekend?
At the most.
I see, okay.
And quite frankly, I spend five more time on that site than, uh, Doctor Edso and, and the people that are there. I mean, I, I can't believe that she has gone to the extent to spend the amount of money that we have spent, uh, to, uh, to get that property the way she wants it relative to training specifics for the dogs. But also, you saw, uh, we've done a lot of work in drainage. The last year alone, we spent almost thirty-four thousand dollars.
But you still got a gravel pit, yeah.
And that was addressed in my letter to you earlier this week, I believe, or last week. Maybe you got it this week.
Did we get a letter?
You got a letter.
I didn't see it. What did it say? I'm, I, I think I missed it.
It arrived Sunday. I, I didn't get it this morning, because I was preparing.
It can be in our next packet. That's all right, but.
It said, we have materials stockpiled, ready to go. As soon as we can secure that part of the property from ATV trespasses and stuff like that, we will proceed.
Excellent, so.
That may be out there a little ways, because when you were there, you saw the crux of the problem.
But the point we have is if you take, do this as an estate lot, technically, it's all one lot and it includes that. And we're trying not to set a precedent where you can put a new use on a gravel permit lot without doing the remediation.
We, we understand that completely.
All right.
So we understand that completely. So basically, my purpose here, uh, and I, your, uh, your use table is, is, was unclear on this, and normally I would go to the building inspector and I said, no, I think I wanna go to the planning board on this. So that's kind of where we are. And I, I think as you have aptly demonstrated that, uh, if there's not gonna be anything permanent there, not anchored.
Quick, quick question.
Sure.
So you said not permanent, but is there a possibility that these campers are gonna show up and set up shop for the whole summer and not leave the site?
If, uh,
Because I mean, more or less that becomes a campground.
Wanted to make in some fashion that an order condition, that would be completely acceptable. There's one other point that I wanna raise. When we met, uh, Saturday, uh, it was always good to see Bill Murray. I haven't seen him for a while. And I was telling him about this and he said, well, uh, if you're gonna have campus undergrounded, it can't go into a normal septic system. He said, it has to be, uh, a closed tight tank because of the chemicals that are used in, used in, in, uh, trailers and things like that. Do not work, uh, do not work at all, I guess, the septic systems. So, uh, taking that advice, uh, it, given the amount of money that we have spent on the property uh, as we proceed forward, if we had to install a separate tight tank, I'm more than happy to do that. That, that would be a relatively acceptable expense for us.
May, may I ask some questions here?
Sure.
Currently, uh, are there RVs that aren't coming to this property?
Yes.
And how do they dispose of their the septic sewage that comes as a matter of fact as part of the utilization of those RVs?
Some of the trailers, uh, have lavatory facilities.
Yep.
And, uh, for the last three, maybe going on four years, we have provided porta potties, so.
And then they get removed upon completing the uses. But anything that is in the trailer itself or the RV itself, if they were to use those facilities during the time that they are there, clearly, they must be leaving and taking it with them and then
Right.
disposing of that in a acceptable manner.
Uh, right, and, uh, if anybody here has owned a travel trailer and RV, you know how difficult it is to find dump stations sometimes? It, it would be.
Or someplace like that.
Well, half the time you have to go to a wastewater treatment plant.
Or wastewater treatment plant directly.
Or another campground and pay a fairly large fee. Uh, Doctor Edso is willing to, you know, take this upon herself and have a tank pumped out once a year. I mean, it's just not gonna get that much use.
Is that a buried tank or an above ground tank?
No, it's above, uh, it's, no, it's buried.
It's above.
Yeah.
It's buried.
I think it has to be buried, right, because of the, uh, environmental concerns that if it breaks.
So I, I don't.
Plastic.
Yep.
Okay.
That way they can reach into the ground.
I, I don't have any direct timeline on this. Um, I didn't wanna go to the, uh, expense of bringing in power, which is gonna be around twenty-five thousand dollars before we even drill the well. Drill is, uh, the well is another ten thousand dollars.
If you're lucky.
We have a ways to go on this. Uh, we are within, uh, twenty-five feet. Uh, we're in the twenty-five foot buffer zone of, uh, a wetland that's, uh, at the front of the site. So this project would also have to go through Conservation Commission. We've appeared in front of them many, many times and, uh, they've, they've been great. Good board to work with. We've never had any problems with them. Obviously, we will have to, uh, come in to the building inspector with, uh, a more definitive plan that will lay out, uh, where, uh, the building will be located. I don't know at this time if this is going to be a, uh, a four-season home or a seasonal cabin. I, I don't have that information yet. Quite frankly, I, I rarely see Doctor Edso. I've seen her once this year. Most of our communication is done by email. And, uh, she'll tell me what she would like to do and ask me how to get it done. So this is where we are today.
Well, with the estate lot and a house, you don't need a permit. You don't need a special permit.
Okay.
So, and you can't do trailers. So we've answered a few of your questions. Why don't you come back to us? And also with your remediation plan for the pit, you'd have to come back to us, because you have to make a plan. So why don't we, we plan to hear from you again, when you have more.
All right, so there's, I think what I'm hearing from the board is there's nothing that would stand in our way of having an additional, uh, uh, survey done for the location of the house and things like that.
Certainly not for a house.
No, right.
But before you get a building permit for the house, it would be good to have a restoration plan for the pit.
Right. I can tell you what we're gonna do right now.
All right, all right.
Basically, we're gonna bring in a, a bulldozer and, uh, regrade the site.
Yep.
And, uh, take the material that we have stockpiled. Uh, a good portion of that is manufactured topsoil. Uh, that was left over from our original restoration. And if we have to bring in some more, uh, product to, uh, do some additional manufactured topsoil, we have enough sand on site to do that. Uh, we also have, uh, a type, uh, uh, a, a Zone B topsoil, uh, that's already stockpiled on site. And I think we're pretty close to having enough material to do what we have to do. Uh, it's basically, I, I don't wanna have to go to the expense to do a big plan for that pit. That, that's really about a week's work with a dozer. That's it.
Oh, I think, uh, 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 a restoration, a restoration plan has to be presented.
Of some, yeah, of some kind. But you can, you probably, you already have preliminary surveys. You know where your piles are. Put it together.
Yeah.
And we'll, okay.
Am I sorry?
Native material in there?
I'm sorry?
It's all native material in that pit?
Uh, for the, uh, topsoil?
No, um, what's in the pit, it's all native material.
It's, no, it's all, uh.
Concrete.
Nope.
Well, we went there. We didn't see anything, right?
And the restoration's beautiful where they redid the rest of the land, so it's very.
Very beautiful.
We need to, um, we have other items on our agenda.
Sure.
So.
So.
Would you like me to stick around for the gravel pit discussion?
Uh, there was a couple, there was a couple who wanted to speak to the site.
Oh, there is. I'm sorry. Yes. See, you should have, that's why you were raising your hand back there and I, I'm sorry.
I'm Carol Brown and I live at two, three, three Gardner Road. And is this a map of the site? Because to get back to his property, well, her property, behind, they have to go alongside of my house and directly behind my house. So this issue directly affects me.
Maybe he has a map and he can show us where you are.
Okay. This is his property and this is me.
Okay.
His road goes right in directly here.
Yeah.
This is, this is yours then, right there.
Yeah, yeah, Carol and Fred Brown.
Okay.
Two, three, three Gardner Road. I didn't know what the lot number is.
That's okay.
But I've had issues. This, when I moved here twenty-one years ago,
I had all trees behind my house with small cart trails. Everything had the rock walls on each side. We could go back there with our dog. At that time, I had a rottweiler. We could go back there and walk. And the last time there was issues that I thought, well, okay, you know, my neighbor wanted to build a pasture out back and he wanted to build, that would be, um, Andrew's. Wanted to build a road to access his pasture and I didn't pay much attention to it. And what happened, because I didn't pay attention to it, was Lo came in and stripped the property, which was all woods. He stripped it. He took all the gravel. He took everything good out of there. And it was just, the property was raked.
When did this happen?
This happened.
The ownership.
Yes, prior to their ownership. So by me not getting involved, things happened and it was very bad. And also what happened, all these cart trails led to a butter's properties. And there, they do not exist anymore. And after this fact, they had to come in from the paper mill and brought this awful stinky stuff and rats to my house to reclaim that property. They didn't reclaim the property. The town or the state, I don't know who reclaimed it. But they brought in truckloads, which actually, I have no proof of it, but it eroded my property. I have holes in my yard because of the trucks going back and forth.
So they went over your yard?
They went around my yard, but you know how yards are built. They're built with fill. So all these trucks going back and forth settled my property. I've got cracks in my garage floor. I've got everything since then, which we didn't do much, you know? And that's why right now I have an issue with anything else going on back there until all of these past issues are resolved. Which would be the reclaiming, the rest of the reclaiming they have to do. They need to define their property lines. They need to define access to properties that abut them because all of these cart trails are gone. Everything was stripped out of them.
But if it's the cart trails that go on to somebody else's property, that's kind of a dead end for.
Yeah, but there was basic access. I mean, at one time, probably years ago, like I said, I've been here twenty-one years. I don't know what was there before then. But it was nice back there. And now it's a field.
But the field is, is quite a successful restoration.
No, like I just wanted to put in a little bit of my past experience and that is why I am very concerned with what goes on behind my house, no.
If I, uh, if I may.
And I have, I have to say one thing, um, as far as people bringing trailers back there, for one thing, I have never seen a camper trailer go behind my house. I've seen single cars.
And that is the only access in, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um.
But it's not a nuisance to you?
No, but I've seen cars. I mean, I've talked to Joey. She's a very nice woman. I've seen them, her, her and her friends back there training dogs. I've actually sat with her. But this doesn't happen very often. And as far as anybody ever staying back there overnight or anything like that, I have never seen it.
Okay.
And like I'm saying, this road goes this way and this way around my house. So I think if there was people staying back there, I would know. I mean, I can see the gate from my back door.
Okay.
And also, um, for him to wanna bring in a lot of trailers and things like that. Now that's gonna affect me because that's a lot of traffic going back there. People are gonna start coming in and staying back there.
So it would have to be a limited number for a limited time, yeah.
That affects me.
Yeah, but what we're, I, I understand, I understand.
You know what I'm saying? I don't want a trailer parked behind my house. You know? I don't want people, I don't know who they are, there, you know, coming and going and, I mean, the dogs, I love dogs. I'm a big dog person and I am, I'm a people person, I love people, but, you know, what.
If, if they come back for a special permit, you will get a notice, you're a director butter.
Yes.
And I think the plans are pretty, he does have an estate, they do have an estate lot there. They can build one house, that's it.
I don't like things ever being decided on, this might happen and that might happen. I think there needs to be definitive purposes. There needs, you know, I don't want this, this maybe and that maybe. We wanna do this because later we might wanna do that.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Cause that'll start, the, the first thing's gonna open a can of worms and it's gonna get to where I have no control over it anymore because once it's there. And like he was saying, with putting power back there, how's this power gonna get back there? Are they gonna put poles or, and wires around my property to run them?
Will you bring the power in through the drive?
Yes, uh, our intention, uh, is, uh, to, uh, come off the, the line on, uh, Gardner Road, um, one, maybe two poles and then go underground the rest of the way. So.
Would it be on her side or?
Yeah, it's gonna go around my house.
Well.
I mean, he's entitled to bring power in though. We can't prevent him from building a house on it.
But you know what I'm saying? I, I am very concerned about anything that happens back there because of the fact that there's been past issues and that I've ignored.
I know you've been through a lot.
Thinking it's a neighbor, you know, a neighborly, they can do what they want with their property.
And I mean, th- we're here and we're noting that.
Yeah.
I think what, uh, what we're also hearing is, is that there are plans, but these plans need to be presented in a more concrete fashion.
Yes.
And I think the chair has very clearly indicated in order for us to be able to get a feel for this here, that, that permit, once it is applied, can be spoken to by yourself and can be, uh, can be addressed to us as well as to the, at that point in time, the person who is presenting that plan. And we would at that point in time consider what your concerns are. And I'm sure that, I mean, as a neighbor, uh, they would also be interested in understanding what your concerns are. I mean, as, I, as I think we all understand is, is that it is a property that does belong to your neighbor. Miss, miss, Mrs., Dr. Edso, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And so from that perspective, her, her rightful use of that property in whatever shape and form exists is certainly something that she has a right, uh, to figure out. I think the best way to figure this out is, is to also find what are the pl- plans in a more concrete fashion. I do have a quick question for you and that is, is, and this is in regards to the trailer. What part, if any, do you foresee being utilized for some of the trailers to park themselves in? Say, for example, if they were coming for a weekend? And I don't believe that we have any say in that because it is only on a temporary basis, right? So my question is, is, and if you have that information, what is the planned use of that in terms of, you have a very large lot, it's roughly about sixty-some odd acres?
Well, uh, first of all, uh.
He marked the trailer locations on this picture there.
That, that I didn't have.
Would you like the telephotograph?
No, I have that now, okay, so.
I've seen this, I didn't read that.
So, uh, first of all, I wanna, uh, agree with everything that Mrs. Brown has said. Uh, lot, uh, long before, uh, Dr. Edso acquired the property, it was completely destroyed, completely denuded.
Yep.
And this is why we, they had the enforcement order from D E P. They actually had an EPA complaint on it as well. So, uh, I will certainly testify to the fact that I was the project manager uh, that did all of the restoration on the project. Certainly it was under my control and authority that brought numerous trucks in there to do the restoration. But bear in mind that the planning board had a requirement that the property be restored. And as part of that requirement, if you look at the, uh, the zoning bylaws, one of the instances, uh, one of the provisions of the zoning bylaw was that, uh, artificial topsoil could be used. Stepping back a little bit to two thousand and six, when I first started working in town for Pitcherville, uh, I helped draft the original rewrite of the Earth Removal Bylaw in Hubbardston. Did that with the original town administrator back in two thousand and six. And I believe the bylaws have been revised twice, maybe three times.
Yes, they have.
Yeah.
We are.
Since then.
We're working, now, if they do the gravel permit restoration, you'll get notice too. It's quite far from your house, it's back.
Yeah, they have to.
But they have to go through that, I understand that.
To my house to do.
So we would, we would put conditions on that and you could come in.
Okay, and what about the past issues before anything moves on to any future plans for this place that the past issues need to be rectified?
I, I'm.
We don't have anything in front of us right at the moment. So when the plans come in, we can make restoration of those areas.
And I think it'd be very important for us to understand, I mean, you, you have indicated that there's been past issues, but I think one of the things we do not have is an understanding of, to clearly what they are. There may be some documentation to that, I mean, like photographic evidence or anything of that nature.
I have a video of walking the rock wall and what the cart trail used to be.
I understand that, but we don't have that here with us.
I have it in my pocket.
Well.
Well.
We're, we're, this is not part of the agenda tonight.
If anybody has an eight-millimeter, you can take it.
Yeah, well, I don't.
And you can renew it at some point.
Yeah, I don't, we don't. But I think it'd be important for us to get, I mean, if you have concerns, it's, it's a very valid thing for you to bring that up. And the question would be more than anything, the, I think, more than anything, it would be very important for us to understand what it is that your concerns are from our perspective. We're not here to, we're here to figure out how to move forward. Going back in history and trying to remediate, that's, I don't think that's something the board has.
I mean, it, here's the problem. We only have certain jurisdictions, okay?
Exactly.
So what, what he has presented to us tonight is he, he has a right because he's got a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and, and the acreage, more than ten acres.
The people he's working for have that.
To put, yes, the owner of this property has a right to an estate lot, to put a house on that lot. And that would not even come to us. It would go to the building inspector, right? So what comes to us is subdivision, is the gravel pit remediation. Are those, so if either of those come to us or any other use of the property that requires a special permit, then we get notice out to a butter's. But we don't have the power to just order things to be repaired unless it's in the context of something else that's being done. And we don't have jurisdiction over this house he's gonna build if he only builds one house because that's allowed.
Yeah, I don't mind the house, but I'm more concerned about is the campers.
Well, we don't have a concrete.
Yeah.
We don't have a presentation in front of us, but.
Well, you know, with the, with a, a house, uh, people are allowed to invite their guests, simple as that.
No, but I mean, what is?
I mean, it would have to be a reasonable limit.
Why are we here right now, what is he asking for?
Well, right now, he has, he's not, he doesn't have anything before us in the way, he was here on an information session.
Correct.
But he has possibly room for five campers?
Four.
Four campers.
And all your.
Which would be RVs that would come in.
And you can just do four campers with an A D, any type of permit?
Doesn't require a permit.
Nope, no requirements from that perspective, especially since it's only on a temporary basis. I mean, it's like somebody coming in with a car, except that it's a truck with.
They couldn't do it for money.
A camper in the back, right, exactly, it's not commercial.
And they couldn't do it permanently and they couldn't put trailers in. But they could allow people to come up their drive, that drive.
Stepping, stepping back, uh.
Yeah, that's what they're just doing.
One of the things that, uh, has had to occur, as I've already presented to the board, these are very valuable dogs, they're very expensive dogs. We've had a problem with ATVs and dirt bikes for a long, long time. And we have done, done a, excuse me?
No, um, not to my knowledge, anytime the dogs are back there, um, we know the gates open. And I've actually talked to Joey myself.
That's correct.
And she has actually given permission from time to time to go through there as long as it stayed directly on the road and went through. And anytime that those animals are back there, I mean, I'm a dog person. Every dog is valuable, I don't care how much they cost. And, you know.
I have to.
So there is no way.
Yeah.
You know, that.
To, to, to close this discussion off.
Yeah, we need to close it because we're all waiting.
To close this discussion off.
Can I speak for a moment, please?
Yeah, she's got something.
I've been waiting, just quickly.
Very quickly.
I won't take that much time. Danielle Jardina, two thirty-seven Gardner Road. Um, I wasn't sure at first what, um, he was requesting, but as I understand now, there's no plan at this point.
Right, it's in front of us, right.
There is no plan, no.
Um, but I just wanted to state that if he had been requesting something not to permit, a special permit at this time, just because, as you know, a week ago Saturday, there's now question about boundary lines.
Yes.
In regards to the properties.
Right.
And also the cart trails.
Right. That's what it had to be.
Mm-hmm.
Established. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I, I hate to cut it short, but people have been waiting here for a long time and we really need to move on to the next person.
Just quickly.
Yes.
Do you have, do you have what you need to go back to Dr. Edso? Because I think you came back, if you came here with a question, I think.
I do.
We don't have an, a, a definitive answer because quite frankly, we don't have a very concrete plan in front of us, right?
Right, but, uh, the purpose of this was discussion and to get some direction from the board. I think that's really important. Just in closing this, uh, there has been, uh, permission granted, uh, to Mr. and Mrs. Brown, uh, in the past and to other people in the past. But unfortunately, uh, ATV drivers have caused enough damage and erosion and enough problems on the site that we've rescinded all permissions entirely. And I feel very badly, uh, about Mr. and Mrs. Brown. I consider them to be responsible people and they've never done anything, uh, wrong or harmful on the property. But if you set a rule that everybody has to stay off, everybody has to stay off. It is private property and this is, uh, Dr. Edso on full lines, right?
Thank you.
So with that, uh, I'll, uh, thank you for the indulgence of the board.
Thank you.
And, uh.
Stay in touch.
Would you like me to stay around for the gravel pit discussion?
It is up to you, this is an open meeting for people to participate or be part of.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we wanna move on to.
Questions for the gravel pit letter.
G, request, request for agenda including gravel, Mr. LeBlanc. Mr. LeBlanc here, he's been here all evening.
Yeah.
We're sorry, you can see, it's a busy night.
Do you mind if I stand?
No, 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 no.
No, you may stand, certainly. You're Mr. LeBlanc.
I'm Mr. LeBlanc, yeah, this is Dana. Reason we came is because we received the letter for Earth Removal Sites. Uh, piece of property, we, we acquired a piece of property on Pitcherville Road. Lot, uh, what's it?
It's on here, lot, it's parcel three, one ninety-five.
One ninety-seven Pitcherville Road. So thirteen point six-six acres.
Yes, in your, in your packet.
Can, can you wait just one second?
Yep.
In your packet, there's a.
This is Mackey Corporation?
Yes.
Back of the last picture we were just looking at.
Yeah. It's in this packet.
That's this one here.
Yeah.
Mackey Corporation Pitcherville Road, zero, three, one nine seven, coming.
Okay, yep. But you had a map of it too, is that on here too? Yes.
I'm chair, it's on the back of this page that we were just looking at.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. So, this is where she's showing you are, parcel oh-three, one nine seven.
Yep, the whole back of it's Fletcher, that's the gravel pit back there.
Okay.
Yes.
So how big is that parcel?
Thirteen point six-six acres. So, we acquired this piece of property, um, from a customer, from a customer of ours. And, uh, you know, looking to end up, our intent is to end up selling the property and recoup, recoup some of our loss. Now, I've received, we received the letter about Earth Removal Sites and come to this meeting if we had any questions about it, so I'm not sure. It looks like this property was, someone pulled something for an Earth Removal at one time. And in doing so and looking at these things, um, we did talk with Roland Jean about, you know, building, you know, you know, using it as building lots. We did receive our denial letter from him because we didn't have enough frontage, we only have a hundred and four feet of frontage.
This front, this is the, this is the.
Actually, you might wanna look at, does this help if you look at this one?
I want a better map.
Yeah.
Except that our other end of the table isn't seen, but.
Years, years ago, you had the old road coming right through here. So our frontage was a hundred and four feet plus two hundred and ninety-eight feet, is what it used to be. Then they moved Pitcherville Road, as you can see here. Now, this portion is owner unknown. So basically, our, our intent, what we would like to do is we would like to just, you know, be able to sell it off. People can build houses there, is what we wanted to do. But then I saw the Earth Removal thing and, yeah, we're just basically looking for options of what we can do with this property.
So how much frontage do you end up having, why did, what Roland say to you?
Well, we only have a hundred and four feet from here to here.
That is directly on Pitcherville Road now.
Oh, because the owner's unknown here.
Right, because when, when, when the old, was the old, old road, whatever it is, I don't know what the name of it was back then. You know, it came down through, so the span from here to here is two hundred and ninety-eight feet, this is a hundred and four feet here. So, I mean, we clearly had enough for a lot back then, but.
So you own this piece?
Yeah.
You own everything but this road piece and you'll.
How long have you owned this?
About a year, just over a year.
Prior to this, I mean, you, you, you purchased a lot with the existing frontage, right?
That's correct.
So when you purchased a lot, you purchased it with a hundred and four point four feet of frontage, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so you never, as an owner, ever had more than that frontage?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
So, the gravel pit, um, is that something where we?
Where is the gravel pit on this lot?
There isn't one, this is the letter that you guys sent us.
Yeah, so what we did was, um, we, we're trying to get a handle on the gravel pit situation. There's a lot of old uses in this town. So many of them are identified from, you know, there's levels of maps, putting assessor's maps over the aerial photographs of the area. And any place that looked like it had been a site of excavation.
So this was probably done, it was probably done as of that because we're surrounded by a gravel pit.
At one point in time itself, it could potentially have been a gravel, part of a gravel pit.
Did you, do you have, did you have it surveyed when you bought it?
Mm-hmm.
Is there evidence of formal gravel pit on your land?
No.
No.
So.
It, it was clear cut at one point, you could tell that there's a lot of.
But there's not been excavations.
No, not, not that we could see.
It looked all wooded, everything was grown back, I didn't, you couldn't tell if anything had been pulled from the earth anyways.
And there's no like cliffs or pits or.
Can I, can I ask?
All right, go ahead.
The, the list that we received here, this one here, which is the, uh, gravel pit list, this is based on information that we've collected as.
It is from aerial photography or from previous, um, lists that were compiled by the planning board. It is possible though that oh-three dash one nine seven was once connected to another lot that was involved in gravel pits. Again, why we sent these out with the concept that they may have been previously used. So if oh three one nine seven, as you can see, was somehow connected maybe to oh three fifty-three at one point, that might have been why I had Mackey Corporation on my, my list. So again, it's a matter of, I, these parcel names and numbers were given to me based on previously accumulated data, which is why the letter does say may, but at the moment aerial photography does not corroborate that this one was actually excavated.
Why don't you write us a letter in response to our letter, if you would, saying there's no evidence that there's ever been any excavation on this lot and give, and sign it as the owners? I mean, we can't, we're not in the position where we can go walk every and prove every, every fact, but if you believe truly that there was never excavation on this lot, then inform us of us and we'll probably take you off the list.
All right, but, but the way, the way things are now, if it, if we, if we wanted to excavate it to recoup some of our loss because of bad debt.
You'd have to apply for a gravel.
Apply for a permit.
You have to apply for a gravel pit permit.
Okay.
Which is.
The way I read this, I thought, I just assumed something was assigned to it already.
The other thing on this is.
Okay.
How much frontage do you have?
Well, that's the, I think the, the biggest initiative is to see if we could. Well, one oh four, yes, from there to there. But then, you know, as we explained before, it says a total of two ninety-eight plus the one oh four.
I don't know, you could, you, you have options when you have limited frontage like that.
So, so this, we're better off in front of the zoning board, I guess?
Well, we are the zoning board.
Well, I mean, how would we go about?
Oh, okay, yes, yes. You know what? You're right. You, you need, you, that's a classic case for a variance. Which is the zoning board of appeals. You apply because it's unique, it's a unique position.
Same as the zoning?
No, 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 it's not.
That threw me off there.
You go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance. I'm not saying, and you, because you have a unique situation with this lot.
Mm-hmm.
And they may consider it because it is uniquely related to that lot.
Yeah.
If, if you, if you were to request a, a permit for a.
For a building, okay.
You have to come to us.
You would have to come to us.
Okay.
And there's a whole process that has to be followed, not one that is guaranteed to give you a permit. I'm just simply saying is that this is the, this is the body that you would come to make that request.
Okay.
But.
And if you wanted to subdivide it, say run a cul-de-sac through that opening, you'd, you would come to us because we in charge of subdivision.
Correct.
All right.
So you got several different options there. Gravel pit, you got to come to us. It's a process. Read our gravel permit. If you want to just build one house lot and you don't have the frontage, it's an interesting situation. You could probably apply, apply for a variance from the zoning board of appeals.
So zoning board for the frontage, if we wanted to turn it into a development?
Correct.
We'd be back to see you, so.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Come back to you after.
Right, you would, you would need to run a road into do a subdivision there unless you had.
But do we have the, I mean, how is, how does that work with the frontage, how it's mapped? Because it says no, you know, it's not in the, uh, no noted information with the town of Hubbardston on, on the plan for that road.
You know, I can't speak for what they would do, but I would, I, I think that if you just wanted to use it for one house lot and you were just arguing, or we missed this frontage because of the way the road was surveyed, they might give it to you.
All right.
Now, if you were gonna.
Yeah.
Subdivide it into a lot of lots, they may not take that attitude. It's supposed to be relief, right? But you, but subdividing, when you run your road in, you need fifty feet for a right of way to get in. You've got the fifty feet.
Mm-hmm.
And then you could divide.
So we could subdivide it and put potentially two lots within the thirteen.
That's not for us to decide. It's something you have, you have to go to the zoning board of appeals and present their, the case that you would have to there.
Minimum is two acre lots, two hundred feet of frontage. So for every house you put on, you'd have to build on your road, two hundred feet of frontage.
And then you have to consider wetlands.
Right, whatever else is there.
And things of that nature. And that's all through the zoning board of appeals.
Wet, wetlands is conservation commission.
Okay.
You'd have to go through if it hasn't any wetlands.
There's definitely no wetlands there. It's a lot of sand.
So you've got some things to think about, but I think if you just wanted to sell it for a house lot, you might be able to get a variance on that. I can't speak for them, but.
You got it. Thank you.
But I think it's very, but it is important though nonetheless, because we do, we have identified that lot, not you, but the lot, as a potentially past pit where earth removal had taken place. As a result of that, what we're asking for is remediation plans or plans for, uh, for restoration.
But if you don't have.
If you don't have that situation and you can attest to that through an, through a letter and send that to Christine to the planning board, we would then consider that. And from our perspective, we might send somebody out there just to quickly check the land, or we may have somebody come over there and just basically validate that, okay?
But it would get you off our list if you could clear it off if there's been no excavation. So send the letter in to us regardless of what else, whatever else you do.
That letter, that situation there.
Important because if you were also to make sure that you want to, say for example, put that lot for, uh, housing or something like that, they might come to us and say, hey, uh, didn't you have this as part of a gravel pit?
Yeah, so we got to clear that up first.
We want to make sure that there's no problems there, okay?
Okay, then maybe we'll see you in the future. But definitely send the letter. Thank you. Yeah, thanks for waiting. Such a long time.
Excuse me, Alice?
Okay, we're, we're flagging fast here. It's almost nine o'clock.
Craig has a question.
Mr. Schmidt.
Craig, Craig.
Yes.
Craig has a question.
Craig, I'm sorry.
More of a statement. I got to get going.
Yes.
Just so you know.
Okay.
You, you may leave. We, we won't lose our quorum. We'll note your, your left.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Will, let me ask you before you leave, are you going to be around New Year's Day or you want to move that meeting?
New Year's Day, I'll probably, yeah, New Year's Day, I think we should move that.
All right, well, we may move it anyway. I just wanted to ask you before you left. All right, it's a last order of business. We'll let you know. Thank you for coming.
And thanks for keeping the roads spicy and clean.
Few days.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Did a good job there on the roads. Thank you.
All right, um, Mr. Schmidt, is he still hung around? He's been standing in the corner for hours.
Yeah, I'm having some cramping issues. I spent all day snowmobbing in Royalston, so. Had some, had some leg issues before I came here. Hi.
Hello again.
Hello again.
I'll work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we got from you a letter, thank you, about, um, requesting that in response to information that we requested, which was helpful.
Yeah, I think I, um, probably owe you guys some more stuff. I brought some plans, just of what the, I think last time he had asked, uh, you know, for some plans on like what the greenhouse looked like or, that's kind of our, what's going in Royalston. So it's the same idea.
This letter, it's all this letter, right? Where he was, he says, uh, you're growing manufactory.
Yeah, I just had one address to update to, uh, the community outreach meeting as well. You guys can keep this if you want. This is just a, a journal.
Tell us what we're looking at here.
All right, that is a greenhouse. So that's what we're putting up in Royalston. Uh, so that's the same thing that we're going to want to put on, uh, Gardner Road.
And how big is this?
That one in Royalston's ten thousand square feet.
Okay.
Is that an existence or?
We're trying to pour concrete next week. So it's getting there. So we're hoping we'll, uh, maybe middle of January.
So this has a, a concrete slab?
Yep.
It has steel walls and a glass roof?
Yep, so polycarbonate roof and the walls are steel with insulation.
What does polycarbonate look like?
Glass, basically.
It's semi-transparent, almost transparent.
Yeah, so we only have that on the roof. So the sides basically just looks like a, a real building. Uh, the difference between what we'll do here in Hubbardston, if we can, um, is in Royalston, we have fans that just blow the air out, um, where.
See the fans?
Uh.
No, I don't.
Yeah, they're not in there. They just basically just blow in the back of the woods.
Yeah.
Um, but that's because we're, we're limited to ten thousand square feet there. Uh, so we'd hope to do a bigger greenhouse here. And once you get bigger than ten thousand square feet, you can't use exterior fans, just because of how the hot, the air just gets hotter and harder as you suck it out of the building. Uh, so we would do basically an enclosed facility, so it's completely closed up. When Royalston would just blow our air out into the middle of the woods. So, um.
We don't have any vents?
No, we, um, well, there will be vent, you know, air conditioning, but it's all filtered.
Okay.
So how a real greenhouse, uh, for cultivation works is you have, um, pretty big machines, really expensive. And they basically just take all your hot humid air and just send it into, you know, pipes in the ground. And then, once your hot humid air hits the ground, it turns into cool dry air. So basically, we just have like a geothermal air conditioner, basically. So you have big machines inside that. Basically make it so we don't have to vent.
Okay, so fair enough. That goes under the concrete?
Um, yeah, yeah, it's.
So you don't have a foundation as such, but you have a.
Oh, we'll have a, um, for these, it's a full frost wall, four feet frost wall. We have radiant heat, so it's, it's a slab.
Has this been considered a greenhouse in other places in the town?
Um.
Steel building or what?
Yeah, in Royalston, we're considering it a greenhouse.
And this is only for growing?
Uh, growing and then the second part's manufacturing.
So, can you explain when you say manufacturing, what do you mean by that term? Because my, my understanding is, is the different phases after the growth takes place.
Yep, so there's different ways you can look at manufacturing. One is a full blown manufacturing, where you're processing, you'll lower grade marijuana and turn it into like an oil, and then you'll make, you know, your own edibles. And then, you know, you kind of have a whole manufacturing process. Uh, what we do with our manufacturing is we basically take, uh, when you manicure marijuana, there's trim, is what they call it. So we basically take.
What do you call shrimp?
Trim, T-R-I-M.
Oh, trim.
Yeah, just like, you know, the pieces when you're trimming up the marijuana nicely, everything that falls. Uh, you basically take that and any low quality marijuana and process it into, is like an oil, so a concentrate.
So there's not just a processing in terms of, uh, extracting the plant components, but also the extraction, right?
That is like the extraction.
The extraction process itself is one where you typically use, uh, some form of mechanism, and I'm not going to define that for you. I'd like you to define that for, for potentially for the board here, as to how the extraction might take place and what is it that you plan on using for that?
Uh, there's two kinds. One is a, uh, what's called a rosin press.
Mm-hmm.
So basically just metal heat presses that just press together and just squeeze it out, all the THC.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the other way that we can do it is like an alcohol version of it. So we don't do like butane. Have you ever heard of the butane extractions?
I have, yes.
Yeah, we don't do boom. We don't do things that go blow.
No explosives.
No explosives.
Possibility.
Um, and then the butane, you know, it's really bad for people. So we do like a.
For the vapor product, for vape.
Yeah, that's for base. Um, so what we'll do is we'll, we're kind of like the first line. Um, so say, you know, people have an edible business. They have to buy their concentrator, their, you know, eighty percent THC oil from somebody. So we'll take basically the stuff that, you know, ten years ago you would have just thrown away, and we'll turn that basically into concentrated THC.
And so again, you would just, you, for the extraction process, you use either one or a combination of a press?
Yep.
Plus an extraction via chemical process, which is an alcohol. I'm assuming when you talk about alcohol, this is meth, not methanol, but it will be ethanol.
Yeah, yeah, so I can, I'm not the grower. I'm not the people in charge of actually doing this, but I can send out like an email to you that exactly goes over the whole. Yeah, I, um, I can definitely do that at some point. We have two of them, so.
All right. Uh, so, I, I guess my, my next question would be, this facility that you have provided black prints, because it's not blueprints here.
Yeah.
Black prints for us. Within that same facility, you would, it would be actually multipurpose? It would be growth plus processing plus potentially extraction?
Um, like I, I consider pro, like, I'm considering processing and extraction the same thing.
That's fine. I mean, I'm just trying to say though, is it's within a, what you call here potentially a greenhouse.
Yep.
This is the site where you would be doing all items together.
Yep, everything.
This would not be the Cattisto site. It would be the other one.
This would be commercial site.
Okay, and that, but so it would be, again, just one, make sure, grow, process slash extraction.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. And that's an important element for us to consider.
Yep. Um, now, everyone, when everyone applies, they always apply for cultivation and manufacturing. Um, so whether we do the manufacturing here or in Templeton, where we're going to have it as well, is kind of up in the air.
But you have, you, you have to define that for us.
Yeah, we, I, we will.
But you would be, you want a store. You wanted to take what was the old, the old, um, stove shop.
Yep.
And create that into a retail area.
That's step one, yeah.
So, you don't have any kind of cannabis licensing, licensing as far as anything right now in Royalston?
Royalston, we're, we're getting our, we just had our fingerprints done and all the background stuff done. Um, so they're basically waiting for Royalston just to go back to the CCC and tell them that we're in compliance with our zoning. And then we should get our provisional in January or December.
So what is your role in this as not being a grower?
Um, basically, I'm the majority owner, so I own about fifty-five percent of the company. Um.
What company?
Uh, Royalston Farm, uh, is the cultivation company. Tempest is the retail stores. Um, so I'm basically the, the person in charge of the company.
So who would you compare yourself to?
In terms of like.
As of somebody either competitor that, as far as who is your competitor going to be?
You know, I don't really look at it that we have, uh, you know, a competitor. Um, the way that I'm looking at the retail store in Hubbardston is that's going to be it. There's just going to be one, one retail store. Um, my law.
But the market itself.
Um, yeah, I don't think we have any competitors. I, I kind of don't look at it like that. Um, the way that we're doing this is, uh, we're, we're owning the entire vertical.
I'm asking you to.
Yeah.
Compare yourself to a business that's already out there, productive business.
Yeah, I would say Gardner. There's a, there's a retail store in Gardner right now.
The name of the business.
I think it's Sanctuary.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a.
Yeah, Sanctuary.
Next to Anthony's Liquor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you, you definitely want, you definitely would be the, what you said, what you're telling me is you've got these three different sites. Templeton, Royalston here, I mean, your grand plan, and you, the shop for all of them would be here because that's a commercial site, but the manufacturing wouldn't necessarily be here. Is that right?
I just can't tell you a hundred percent for sure yet.
Okay.
Um, we could just concentrate it all in Templeton and then just, I'm not sure how I would move from one facility to the other. So when you, when you move from facility, there's like a seed to sale tracking. I mean, it's all, you know, everything is like weighed and so to move something from one facility to another facility just to process it could be too much of a harassment.
However, your request, your request is all encompassing though.
Yep, yep. So, you know, generally, I guess, you know, just an example, this ten thousand square foot greenhouse in Royalston, uh, you know, seventy-three hundred square feet is cultivation, processing is like four hundred square feet. It's just one little room.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and why someone really does that for cultivation is so when you have stuff that doesn't look so good, you just process it. Rather than, you know, have to throw it away, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, it's just that.
It sounds like there's a lot of questions to that, so I'll just put it all down on paper and get you the exact answers. In terms of what, how.
I think it matters though, if we're saying, okay, you're going to grow ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
But you're going to process twenty thousand square feet. I mean, those are things that we kind of need to know. Or you're going to sell forty thousand, you know what I mean?
No, I can definitely, uh, define that.
And I think you need to think about that because it's going to affect what people's, you know, we have a very basic bio which we should fix. It's not nearly adequate. But it does limit, you know, it's, that's how it sets it up, ten thousand, ten thousand what, processed, sold, you know?
Yeah, yeah, for the residential.
Facts brought to the table.
Yeah, um.
So we do, we do need to know.
Yeah, I would say then consider it a hundred percent in for manufacturing. So there's, you know, a small little cure room, and then we're just going to have a machine in the cure room.
So you're going to, you're going to process what you grow there and sell what you grow there for starters, without mixing the facilities?
Yeah.
Um, so I, I guess from the greenhouse, so in the greenhouse, you're going to grow your marijuana.
Right.
When your marijuana is done, you bring it into the cure room and you dry it.
Okay.
Um, and then you trim it up. So say every pound you trim up, maybe you have an ounce of just byproduct. So what we do is basically store that byproduct and then, you know, most likely, we'll have a definitive answer for you, but then we run it through our machine. And then we turn it into basically a liquid THC. And then we package that THC just like we do marijuana.
Okay.
And then we sell it.
Okay, and the rest of it you package to sell as the raw, as the leaf?
Yeah, as, as flour, yeah. And we only sell that, you know, to other retail stores. So we can sell it to our own retail store, which is a transfer.
Okay.
Or we sell it to, you know, from the greenhouse to other retail stores. Uh, the way we're setting our company up is we're going to have three retail stores and, you know, basically sell our own product.
Okay.
Um, so.
Okay, so, um, I know you were interested in a community outreach hearing, getting it started. And I know you were supposed to meet with the select board, but you got snowed out Monday night.
Snowed out, yeah.
So I've actually talked to Ryan a little bit about, and you're going back there next week.
Yeah, Monday.
Monday. So he said, um, oh, he said, for community outreach, there's, you know, there's, this is a process that's, that we have to give notice. I've been through this, right?
Couple times.
So, and you have to front, you have to pay the money for that.
Yep.
So Christina can get a, an estimate together and you could send her a check.
Yep.
To do that. But, um, they, they had said, well, possibly January twenty-seventh or Jan-, or January sixth and to the rest of my board, those are Mondays. So that's when they meet. So we would go to their meeting and they would either devote their, you know, would, they won't make us sit through the rest of their meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But we would go to them instead of them coming to us unless you have conflicts with a Monday night.
As long as I have some notice, I should be available.
Okay, well, they're thinking the twenty-seventh or the sixth, I think the sixth is kinda short, but you're gonna talk to them.
Well, for the what, the community?
Community outreach.
Yeah, that's fine, it's um, I'd rather do the si- I'd rather do the six.
I told him you were.
Um, because I just basically that's just a, I consider it just a checkmark, it sounds bad, but I just checkmarked that off and then the town can actually sign. You know, in HCA with me. Um, so the sooner I.
You, you're gonna have a crowd though, because this is, this is all. So you wanna be able to, I think, present to them very clearly. And, and I would like to have the landowners come too, at least invite them to come.
Yep.
You're gonna go, you've been in talks with them, right?
Yeah, so we have signed, um, we signed deals, so I just signed yesterday for the nineteen acres at sixty-nine Gardner Road.
Uh-huh.
And then we got assigned with.
These are like an option you're talking about signing?
No, no, we already signed, so that's done deal.
You mean, you could buy the land no matter what?
We're buying it, they can't.
Sixteen Gardner, that's the.
That's nineteen acres.
Is that the pit?
That's the pit?
No, the pit's thirty-two.
It's the stove shop.
The stove shop's fifty-six Gardner Road.
All right, I'm confused, all right.
The old Christmas tree farm, Clayton's property.
Okay.
To the bus depot.
Oh, the commercial, uh, it's now has this big uh sign outside.
Yeah, so they got the house they're trying to sell and that's on one parcel, and then they've got the nineteen acres that runs in the, like, the back.
Okay, so the nine, so you bought the nineteen acres.
Well, I used to, I used to buy Christmas trees from Mrs. Leighton. And they were like twelve, no, fifteen, two feet tall.
Oh, man.
Could you, you know, I'm the only one that doesn't know this town. So you bought the nineteen, the nineteen acres.
Agreement, so, it's like, you know, an offer purchase.
An offer purchase, and that's at sixty-nine Gardner Road, it's nineteen acres. Okay, and so what would you be doing on that lot?
Uh, cultivation, manufacturing.
So that's where the greenhouse would go, no?
I'd like to do two greenhouses. But that greenhouse would get shoved away in the back of the woods.
And that is commercial?
Commercial.
It's commercial, it's zoned right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the stove shop is, address is one fifty, did you say?
Fifty-six.
And you're still looking at that?
Yeah, we have a signed offer. So we're gonna, that's where we wanna put the retail store.
So you have a PNS with them.
And these lots are, they're not contiguous.
No, they're across the street.
Across the street, all right, and how, how big is that lot?
That's two acres, it's really small.
Two acres, all right. Okay, all right. So those are the two you're looking at, and then what you had mentioned, um, the Cattistos when you were here.
Yeah, so I kinda got brought into that, so my buddy Alan Crane, who you saw, so he wants to. Move into that yellow house, so working on something for him and his family to move in that yellow house, and I have another partner who wanted to do solar there. And then I figured it's thirty-two acres, so so much.
So, well, so your.
But I, go ahead.
Outreach hearing is just gonna deal with the sixty-nine and nineteen?
I would deal with just sixty-nine and fifty-six.
Alright, sixty, fifty-six, I know.
Thirty-two is kind of, I'm willing to help, but.
All right, so you would deal with those, and it's, this says for that hearing. Uh, you include a discussion of the type of marijuana establishment, so you're gonna have to refine that to.
Yeah.
How much of manufacturing, how much of growing, what you're doing. Um, to be located, security information, which is pretty important, you discussed it with us, it would include things like. Fencing, how much money you'd have, how you're gonna deal with those security issues.
Yeah.
Steps taken by the applicant to prevent diversion to minors is one of the criteria, this is from our bylaw.
Yeah.
And a plan for a positive community impact, which will be important to the group. Um, and information to demonstrate location will not be a nuisance, a nuisance includes. Anything that, you know, odors, traffic. Um, you know, the, the things that are annoyances.
Yep.
Right, so I think you, you gotta think about how you're gonna prepare that, but you don't wanna hostile audience, you know?
It's kinda the hostile.
You have to, uh, well.
I will say, we'll see, but generally I've, I've done a bunch of these and most of the time not many people come to pat you on the back, they come to yell at you. Which is fine with me, it's, it's something that we just have to do, um. But I, you know, I know a lot of the concerns that people are gonna bring up, we already have answers, like, oh, it's gonna smell. It's an enclosed system, so, you know, there's some answers that we have, but it's kinda good, you'll have some people that you'll probably see some real angry people and. Hopefully, like some other towns we've done, after you kind of explain it, they kinda relax a little bit.
Well, I think, um, when you, when you, you talk about community impact, certainly the money is an issue, and you've already done that analysis. So I'm just, I caution you like I do anybody that's coming before us, you know, put your best, most professional. View, I don't know whether you can do. Uh, a PowerPoint with photos of, you know, this isn't out of the ground yet, it's just under construction.
Yeah, it's just on, we have pictures from the company of other ones that have been built.
I would bring it all, and I would bring the plot plans, I would bring it.
Plan, this is just the detail of the greenhouse.
Yeah.
It doesn't show any kind of impact on the earth around it.
Yeah.
And, and we will.
Water septic and things of that nature is one, another item that I, and I.
Electric is in one too.
Electricity and things of that nature, one curiosity I have is, is, and I, I'm, I'm still trying to understand, is, is, are there any. Building code requirements in terms of the type of buildings that you are planning on putting up, what building code do they fall under? Do they fall under F-one, do they fall under H, do they fall under M?
Yeah.
Things of that nature, is there some, is there something that the building codes? Uh, here in Massachusetts are require you to adhere to?
Uh, not from the CCC, um.
I didn't see anything on the CCC either, but.
They have what's called an architectural review, so any building we put up, they do like their own review of it. Um, but there's nothing that says what kind of a building we have to have, is that what you're asking or?
Well, I'm thinking of it more from the building code perspective, building codes are really more there to address things such as. Capacity, human factors such as, for example, if you're going to have volatile equip- uh, you know, volatiles and things of that nature. Uh, I don't know if you're planning on, say, for example, uh, burning fossil fuels for the purposes of adding CO2. In order to promote the growth of your, uh, y- your plants and things of that nature. Any carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, uh, monitoring systems and things of that nature. That's why I'm asking you that question as to whether or not the state of Massachusetts has already. Looked at this here and post, I do know that other states have, states like Oregon, Colorado, and other places have indeed already. Looked at that in very serious manner, especially after the fact, I think we're kind of like. Getting to that point eventually, but some of these other states, including California, they've already had this established for a number of years. And as a result of that, building codes have come into place, I wasn't sure as to whether or not Massachusetts. Already has imposed those on growers and facilities that are going to do processing and extraction like yours.
Yeah, it's a good question, so the CCC does have restrictions in terms of energy uses. So it's like how many watts per square feet you can have, I think it's thirty-six, um, but we're a greenhouse, so we're using a lot of sun. Um.
But still, I mean.
But that's basically just electricity, it's the only like real, we have to have handicap, just standard stuff that the CCC wants to make sure we have.
But even the energy consumption, for example, many of the lamps that you are typically using in places like that, a lamp like that can use one kilowatt hour.
Oh, yeah, it's a thousand watts.
They're very, very large usage, uh, and so as a result of that, we need to make sure that you have adequate supply of electricity. Uh, and, and, and access from poles and things of that nature that, that, that are adequately, uh, setting that, uh, you know. Set up for your, for your type of operate, that's why I'm asking that question, okay?
No, makes sense.
Is there, are these, these are grow lights?
Yeah, so we use, we supplement, so in the winter, um, you know, say it's six in the morning, so our marijuana flowers. Is you put it on twelve hours on of sun, twelve hours off, so in the winter, at six in the morning, we need sun, so we're gonna turn on. Thousand watt lights, a whole bunch of them.
And does this like blow through the glass roof and light up the neighborhood?
Good question, so we, um, have what's called blackout curtains, so we basically can press a button. And any one of these bays, we just blackout, so like in Royalston, we've got an agreement. That when it's in the winter, we're gonna blackout the lights, I don't really worry about in the summer, cause the sun's still out at late. But yeah, anytime there's lights on, we black them out.
Cause that would be a nuisance issue.
Oh, huge, huge, um, the real reason, not that we don't wanna be a nuisance, but we do it to save heat, so these. These curtains that come over also save our heat.
Or blanket.
Yeah, it's like a blanket that's breathable.
Okay.
So that's, that's where.
But it is light, it is blackout, okay.
Yeah, so we can blackout the sun.
All right, I don't, I don't think we can solve all the issues tonight, um, but I do think that. You can talk to the planning board.
Yep.
Tell him that. Tell the Sleitman, uh, uh, and Ryan, I think if you connect with him first.
Yeah.
Will tell you the, the, either the twenty-seventh of January or the sixth of January, and we will go with their date and we'll be there.
Yes.
I think that another thing you might do is you might. Talk to Roland Jean, our building inspector who is here tonight.
From Gardner, right?
From Gardner, and the good news about that is Gardner maybe has a few of these.
Yeah, they've got a, they've got a re- they got another retail, you know, the ninety-nine restaurant, they're putting a retail store right there in that parking lot, another retail store.
I saw there was more commercial, so he may be used to this.
They've got a greenhouse coming in there too.
Rely pretty heavily on him, so if you could make an appointment and talk to him too, um. Maybe even before your meeting, I don't know how.
No, definitely we'll go talk to him.
Uh, he's, he, uh, just to fill him in on what's going on, um, and then. We'll put this together, you, you know, the timeline, it has to work out, if you're gonna go with the sixth, it's really short notice. Cause she is, this has to get everything out two weeks ahead, and we have Christmas and everything else in between, so let her know as soon as you can.
Yeah, so hopefully Monday they'll agree to the sixth, that would be awesome.
And then.
And then.
Send it, send a letter, you're requesting a meeting for the state, send a check caller first, get the check and we will try to get you a date.
All right, cool. We have somebody in.
I have a question.
Question.
So you guys are talking about having a community meeting?
It's called a community outreach hearing.
Oh, this is gonna be awesome, I'm bringing popcorn.
It's gonna be awesome.
Where is this gonna be?
We, it's not, we don't know yet, but abutters do get notice on it.
It's gonna be awesome.
It's, it, it, it's published notices, so it'll be on town hall, it's just like any other hearing.
And why have you not come to the economic development committee at all?
She's, yeah, she's.
I, I know, I heard she was part of it, that's why I was like.
Yeah, and you got the chair sitting right.
Um, I'm sorry.
I'm also head of Girl Scouts and I will be selling Girl Scout cookies out.
Thin mints, thin mints, I like thin mints, I freeze them.
I got a few of the Girl Scout troops that, don't worry, we're all over it, we're gonna have booths and we're gonna be rich. So where, when's this meeting, the sixth?
We're hoping.
We do, we do not know, this is, don't get too excited, we got a lot of steps, between here and there.
Too late.
And a lot of, and a lot of, you know, it's a process, it's a process. But he's entitled to a community outreach hearing and you guys are all entitled to notice. So see what the select board says and we will work with them.
Okay.
But as much as you could put together would be helpful on all of those things.
And then we'll have for this, the community outreach meeting, I'll have, uh, one or both of the growers show up. Um, so we have, and we also have a chief compliance officer, so a bunch of people that, you know, work under the Cannabis Control Commission and other places.
So they can ask questions, that's fine.
Brought over.
Tell, tell the select board that.
Yeah.
Um, and, and also I, 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 I can't stress enough, I think the owners should come.
All right.
Because they have the local connections in town and there may be people that have, or at least they need to be invited, I'll invite them if you don't, I'm just.
All right, I think Ken, one of the owners, he's, he's, he's gone for the winter, he's happy in Florida right now, I believe. Um, and then I can check with the other owner.
Okay.
He, he owns the wood stove.
Yes.
Yeah, so he, yeah.
Okay, he's gone, that's all right, but they ought to have a, a chance to come too. All right, anything else he can do for you?
Nope, cause you guys wanna keep this at all?
Yes, we do, thank you very much.
As long as you have.
You have another copy?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, we, we've still gotta get that one signed.
We're not taking your copy.
All right.
All right, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
We will see you again.
My suggestion is you come well prepared.
Well prepared, we are.
Yes, very serious and well prepared. Okay.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for waiting through all of our, our lengthy meeting. Um, moving along, the sign by law, we, we asked Todd Miller respectfully because we knew tonight was gonna be like this. Just to make it later, uh, no new business, no matters not reasonably anticipated, gravel pits. Um, just very quick, November third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, right, we walked, um, I have a, can hardly think now, cause I do with my little spiel about it, hang on. We went to the Marinelli's back two pits, you may remember back, uh, four lots, second area. Three parcels, three parcels, and we had to get there, we went through the fail line access road. And we, Bill Murray met us there, so it was, uh, four of us, right? Bill didn't go in the end, but John didn't go.
Craig, Craig was there.
Craig was there, great, so Craig, Josh.
Yourself, myself.
And we met, uh, Murray there, and we met Mr. Christopher.
Christopher.
Who, who, who was the agent for that lot, and the, the. The upshot of the meeting is, we did look at the area that had been restored, and it may be true that it stunk and it was a mess getting it done. But right now it is a beautiful field, the restoration was quite successful, we were told that the wildlife is back, that. Cause it had been, it was a bigger problem than just a, a pit, they had disturbed wetlands and endangered species and really got themselves in hot water up there. But the restoration is good, there is still a pit there, it's not a huge area, so what would you say, maybe three acres? Five acres, it's very hard to get, and there is stockpile, it's a significant. But the surprising thing was that Mr. Christopher thought that it was entirely located on. Failing land and not on the Marinelli three pieces. So what Bill's suggestion was, is since there was, failing had paid for an entire perimeter survey, instrument survey. That they go back to that surveyor and run the one line that's by the pit and just decide that issue, so that's where we left it.
And that was something that was, uh, expressed to Mrs. uh, Marinelli.
Yes, to Ann.
And did he admit to doing the damage to the pit or?
No, they was bought, it was bought that way.
It was bought like that.
But it wasn't in, uh, like the endangered species area to, he does have a problem with dirt bikes, you could see, and it's very fine sand. It would go through an hourglass, you know, it was, um. But anyway, if, if he is serious about restoring it with his letter, we should get it from him. And if Mrs. Marinelli has the line drawn, she may be able to get all of her land out of it.
Right.
Uh, for consideration, so that's where that stands.
Three lots that were in question.
Yes.
Which has other lots where we do know that there is a pit problem.
And there is, I also talked to Ryan today, this is, this is actually a matter not anticipated by the chair, but you know, we went out to look at the town pit. Which is in front of the Marinelli pits, and, um, he's putting together a grant to see what could be done. With the town pit, and this is a, um, he's applying for a grant for a study through mass development. I, I can't remember the name of the hole, but it's a, a major planner in the area that does this, and they told him. That it would be good if they could consider the Marinelli pit possibly with that. So I've been trying to reach on it, and, and knew that, you know, one reason we put her off. And that, that with these back pieces, because they wanted to see what the town would do. So, um, he wants to include it in the grant application, that the grant is not to do anything but to study it.
Right.
But they said it would be much more, you'd be much more likely to attract meaningful income to the town and help getting it done. If, um, if, if they could look at that piece too.
Right.
So I'm calling her, so that's my, my gravel pit news, I don't know, Christina may have something else, you have anything else on gravel pits?
Uh, just the replies to the intention letter sent, I, I made up the proposed, um, spreadsheet with regards to who.
Yes.
Who was applied and who had not.
Right. Right, so now we have some more notes that we're taking with, with respect to these, so I think we're making big progress on this actually. But I do think that, um, we did talk about whether to follow up any further.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm kind of inclined to bump it to next month, give people another month to answer. And then I think we should follow up second letters or phone calls or something.
Did, did we have any?
Just cause we're so busy right now.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, did we have any follow-ups on the, uh, potential cease and desist that took place? And I know that, uh, our building inspector is no longer here, so.
Uh, the answer that we got from him was that there was not evidence that the amount of, uh, gravel being taken out. Was in excess of the amount permitted by the bylaw, and so there was no cease and desist that was moved forward on that.
Gotcha.
So we do have that issue of whether we wanna amend the bylaw.
And I think that's certainly something that I, 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 in, in addition to, uh, what was presented earlier by Mr. Uh, by, by Ed, um, I think it would be good for us to review that. And include that as part of our, uh, review of bylaw.
We're gonna have to set serious time aside to do this.
I, I, I understand that, but I think this is, this is an important element, because it is a big gaping hole right now in our bylaw.
Yep, I agree, Christina, I'll try to get together an agenda where we'll do something with all of those.
Yeah.
Uh, report on affordable housing is, um, Carolyn Reed, I spoke to her today. They did send somebody out that already tried to locate lot two twenty on Ragged Hill Road, which is not really defined. But, um, their agent, uh, did talk to Ryan when he was here, he did have, he did have, uh. Assessors lots and some information and got. A look at the vicinity of where these lots are, maybe not close within a hundred feet or, you know, going with mailboxes and addresses and so on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and he said, he, his report to her, she hadn't talked to him, cause this just happened. Was that it appeared to be all wetland, uh, all, I'm sorry, upland, upland, no wetland, and good. But they were gonna do a few more mapping and look at it, cause they can't, you can't really walk it in the snow, but assuming it is good, then. Um, then that's our lot, and the town's gonna sell the other three, and they wanna advertise them as early as January. Early January, so we're just trying to get her to, to make sure that two twenty is good enough, uh, for the house lot. All right.
That's the correct number, I thought they were on the other side of the road.
Two twenty.
It's lot, lot two twenty.
Lot two twenty, not as a street address.
Not the address, it's a lot number.
Not the address, it's a lot number.
Lot, map three, yeah.
Cause I'm like, they're on the other side of the road.
Right.
That's not the right side.
So you have an idea where they are?
Yeah, I, I live right down the road from them.
Okay, and they are, they are upland lots?
Yeah, you mean they go up?
No, meaning they're not wetland.
Oh, they, I'm like, they, they go up, yes.
They sold for the back.
No, there's, well, because you have, on the side of the road that I'm at, it's, um. It's owned by one, it's one big massive property, and the other side is the four town lots, and then on the backside is state forests.
It's one of those town lots.
Yeah, it goes, it kinda like heaves up and over, and I don't think it's too wet.
Okay. Would just be the question, can you do septic systems and that kind of issue?
They were perked, I thought, I remember seeing them.
I don't know. If they're, if they're, if that's interesting news, I'll see if they, I don't know how.
They dug back there and I don't know if they perked them all.
Went recently?
Oh god, no, they're talking a while ago.
So they might have to redo it.
Yeah, they, I would imagine at this point, but there's like chain, like, um, where they drove in and dug up and did a perk or something back there on all four of them.
But anyway.
There's, um, pillars with chains.
Wow, okay, alright, I'm gonna get final clarification next week from her, that two twenty is a go, and that's the story on this. So again, for the, for the public out there, we will be putting together an affordable housing committee just to work on this one lot, I have a couple of volunteers already. Um, associate member, you saw the legal opinion that went out, I don't think we've heard anything back, it just went out, right?
Went out on the twenty-fifth to KP Law, we've heard nothing back.
Okay, uh, ministry's. Special permits outstanding list still in project, process, um, training.
Did you find out anything on that? I sent the, uh, email out a week ago, I have not received back and was going to, um, follow up this week and find out, uh, maybe somebody's on vacation or something, but I've heard nothing in response to my email.
Try to get overlays, yeah, try to get the overlay one to come and tell us, help us out.
Thanksgiving weekend, yeah.
Chromebooks, I'm canning it over to you, they're in, and?
Um, they're in, I wanted to, uh, make it clear that these are now set up for your use, uh, just as a reminder, anything put into a. Public email account is public record, if a public record request comes through and asks what did these people say in their email, I go into your email and I grab all of it and give it to them, that's public record, so just. Be, making aware of that, the reason we have these is because anything put on the table during a meeting, including a laptop, is subject to public records requests, so if you have your phone out and put it on the table. During a discussion or look something up, somebody could ask for that later, so just don't do that, that's why we have the Chromebooks now, um, just as a reminder, and if anyone needs training on how to use a Chromebook. Or any other device, please come by my office during normal business hours and we'll figure it out.
I'm first up on that, don't be shy.
And remember, there is no warranty on these, so if you break it, then we have to buy another one.
Don't worry, they'll just set up right in your car.
Not, not even a basic warranty?
There is a basic warranty, but that does not cover accidental damage and destruction.
But other than that, I mean, say, for example, there's.
Yes, if it, if it stops, if it stops working suddenly, yes, I'm under warranty for a year, no problem. They've got us nice cases, so.
For one year.
But exactly, but if you were to drop it and it has a huge crack across the screen and now it's not working, they probably won't honor the warranty.
So definitely sure. I understand that.
Alright, well, thanks for, for doing that, thanks for getting the cases, we're wonderful, wonderful progress.
Oh, you'll be seeing the, the bill for the cases at the next meeting, that went through WMAZ, it was only, it was only, uh, nine dollars a piece.
That's alright.
We, we take this home with us, we don't have to leave him here with you or anything like that, right?
Yes. No, no more paper packets.
Gotcha.
There will be no more paper packets starting next meeting.
And all of this arrives for the next meeting, everything's gonna be on the Chromebook, right? Okay, budget is very short, I just really need to be out of here by three hours, it's way too long for a meeting. We've gotten a request from Ryan that, for the budget.
Yes.
Um, that we, it has to be basically level funded, so we could move things from line one to line two, but it can't, has to be the same bottom line, does not include. Like a salary increase, weight, you know, cost of living or whatever, for Christina, that's done as a block under a different line, so, um, I don't know. Um, what do we need to do with that if we're gonna level fund it?
If you're gonna level fund, I would just like to vote stating that the board has reviewed the budget and is, is voting to level fund the budget, and then I will pass that on to Ryan, who will be happy.
Do you have it in here?
Uh, it's on the back page of your agenda packet, right there.
Alright, let's all take one minute and take, and to look at it and then take the.
It is the final column, this is the budget as, because you know the budget changed quite a bit in the last year because of all the special meetings we had, the final column, uh, planning board expenses was at a thousand. Um, the economic development coordinator was at forty-one hundred, uh, Montezot Regional Planning District Assessment was at one thousand five hundred and thirty-three, which is what we pay to MRPC. Um, master plan expenses went down, but that's because we used, I can remember all the funding.
The granting.
The granting, we got, we didn't end up needing the master plan, so they got rid of that during the budget, and then my, my salary is the last one.
And may I a- ask, I mean, each one of these columns individually represent, so for example, that first column with the, which is gray and then the second column, the third.
Okay, that was the, the original amount.
Yeah.
And you'll notice that they get progressively smaller as they go to the right, those were those, uh, separate meetings we had, that's what those, um, those numbers represent.
Wait a minute, so what is the final one, the last column here?
The final one, the one on the far right is the one that is our current budget.
So we would be voting to level fund at twenty thousand three fifty-four?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Let me quickly read this here and just make sure that I understand this here.
Or anybody else can.
So currently the, item seventy-seven is a thousand, it's just very small, I just wanna make sure I understand this here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's just.
Item seventy-eight is four thousand one hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Item seventy-nine is one thousand five hundred and thirty-three. Item eighty is zero, item eighty-one is thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one.
Yes.
And that's a total for the planning board under the current, which is the last column, which is twenty thousand three hundred and fifty-four, am I reading that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'd like to put forth a motion that we're leveled, so leveling, level funding the budget, and this is budget for two thousand and.
FY twenty-one.
FY twenty-one. At the, uh, at the current rates as dictated on the last column with a total of twenty thousand three hundred and fifty-four, broken down by. Item seventy-seven, which is planning board expenses of a thousand dollars, economic development coordinator four thousand one hundred. Montezot's regional planning district assessment of fifteen hundred and thirty-three, the master plan expenses at zero. Planning board assistant at thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one, and again, with the total planning board level funding at twenty thousand three hundred and fifty-four, that's my motion.
I second, oh, I will, he beat me to it, John seconded it.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
Uh, point of order, it was stated at the beginning that you, we have no, um, discretion over the planning board assistance funded, that, that number may go up or down, I just wanna make sure that's on the record.
Yeah.
Yes.
That even though we just stated that we're going to do it by those numbers, that last number may go up or down depending on how the town votes later.
I understand that, but based on what we have right now, this is what we're presenting, this is level funding, and this is what is being presented to the town administrator.
Just making sure that's a. That's level funding, yeah. Okay, good.
Okay?
Yep. So Ryan said, one more comment, which is Ryan said in his comments that we didn't include, we shouldn't include wage increases that it was set, do you understand?
That's what I was just stating, my, that, that last item eighty-one is not up for your vote, essentially, that's what I'm stating, so you can say level funded and you're great.
Okay, you know, it's, okay, I see, that's what you're telling me.
But no matter what happens, i- i- item eighty-one may go up, down, wherever it goes, it will change.
It will change, but we are presenting it as such.
Okay.
You're presenting it as you're fine with way, it's going to be, period.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so his last part of that sentence was something like, and I can't remember the email, was something like, but if, so, so we can't like, you know, vote or raise or. But we can send a letter highly, you know, asking if there, if this is possible, we greatly appreciate the help of our, and we could not. Do what we're doing without Christina, begin to do it, so I'll, I'll write a letter.
Yes.
To, to.
To as part of that, but doesn't have to be part of this vote, that's just discussion.
Yes.
Unless there's any objection, okay, so we'll vote on, ready?
Yes.
Everybody ready to vote on approving the budget?
Aye.
All favor, aye, okay, and the last thing, I believe, is what to do about our next meeting, and then I'll let you go, but we have to decide, do we wanna try to meet on the first or is it just impossible?
My opinion, the first is a very difficult day for many people, some people are traveling, they're with family, they may be in other locations.
Very difficult, yes. Yeah, could we move it to the second Wednesday of the month, or?
Is there any problem with moving it to the second Monday of the month with the vote, will we let everybody know?
I will not.
As long as everyone has enough notice in advance, I don't think there's an issue.
I, I, I will not be here.
You'll not be there the second Wednesday.
No, the second Wednesday I will not be in, yes, I will not be available.
Our calendar currently states the first or the third, madam chair, just as a point of order, um, typically, the calendar that we've released to the board states that they. Were to reserve the first and the third Wednesday, it's not the first and the second, so we might wanna consider.
We have, we have another meeting this month.
No.
We don't. I mean, that's something else, oh, this, this month would fall on like Christmas Day or something, alright?
The twenty-fifth, which is not necessarily the best either idea, the eighteenth would be, uh, not next week, but the week thereafter.
Yeah, which is not good either.
I can do the eighteenth.
I am.
You're gone.
I, I, I can do the eighteenth myself, yes.
If we met on the eighteenth, we don't have an agenda put together for then, started, right?
No.
You're talking about the eighteenth of, of December, right?
December.
December, I think we have a lot of material that needs to be already started and looked at.
But we. But we could devote the whole session to, if you wanted to meet, to bylaws.
Bylaws. Yeah, or at least starting, putting some structure around that.
And, starting, doing them about things we could do, you wanna meet the eighteenth and then we'll skip the first?
That would be fine with me.
And, and meet the third week in January instead?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, the eighteenth, will you let Craig now, and Bill?
I will, I'll send out an email.
Bill. And I think you s- let them know ahead of time that the three items that we're, are gonna be looking for i- within the, uh, bylaws, right?
Right.
Right, well, actually, we have, yeah, we have the gravel, we've got solar, and we've got the marijuana, and then there's a whole laundry list to clean up stuff, that Christina's gotta put together.
And the marijuana.
And if there's something. And if there's some, exactly, if there's something that comes back from, uh, KP Law.
Right, right.
We'll get to it.
Okay, I will, is there anything else that you know of that we've forgotten?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
A second?
I will second that motion.
Not debatable.
Not debatable.
Although, aye, okay.
I'm sorry, who seconded, I missed it.
Uh, I made the motion.
He did the motion, I seconded.
Thank you.
I need maps. God, did I, did I short you time?
No.
No, okay.
That's.
This was if I needed to have them, it's the maps of all the property in back and the cart roads and everything.
Oh.
I thought he would, he had said when we met that he was coming forward tonight to do something different, I, 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 I didn't know what he was gonna do, I couldn't ma- I mean, he submitted stuff to us and he didn't ask for anything concrete, so.
It was very, very big.
But he was very kind to let us walk through their land to look at the situation back there, so.
Oh, yeah, no, the sign.
Christina, what about this, I mean, so many.